Okay, we will call to order the public hearing scheduled for 5:30 PM for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to the purchase and sale agreement with Amazon.com Services LLC for undeveloped land located at 305 Great Hill Road, Anzero Sheridan Drive, Nogatuck, Connecticut, Waterbury, Nogatuck Industrial Park, Lot 2, for consideration of $325,000 as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. If you wish to address the Board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and I will give you a one-minute time limit. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condas.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. My name is Paul Condas. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. As you're well aware, the Amazon project is up and running. Let's not impede its progress. Vote to approve this ordinance, please.
Next speaker from 82 Beersley Avenue, Christine Smolkus.
Hi, I'm Christine Smolkus, 82 Beersley Avenue. Thank you for the chance to speak. My concern about the sale is the low sales price. The city of Waterbury has already practically given away that whole mountain to Amazon. And now, if Amazon wants this land, they have tons of money in Waterbury, should not just hand it to them for such a low price. Also, Amazon has given other cities lots of benefits when they moved in, such as big donations for schools and for local nonprofits like food pantries and funds for housing. And Waterbury is getting nothing like that. I presume it's because the city didn't ask or they didn't do their homework to know that Amazon claims they give all these perks to cities that they move into. So, we got nothing. Why should we be the only city left out? I believe the city can and should get more than $325,000. And I suggest we use some of that money to help the residents in that neighborhood who are being affected by the project now and who will be affected by this warehouse when it's up and running. One possibility could be using the funds to get building inspections for people who want them, because the developer promised that anyone who might be affected by the blasting could get an inspection of their house free of charge, so that way, if any damage occurs, they'd know whether it's from the blasting or not. Well, their blasting company is refusing to do the inspections unless you live ridiculously close to a blast less than a few hundred feet. People in the Gil Martin neighborhood and the Platts Mill neighborhood and beyond are getting our houses rattled every day by the blasting. The blasting is expected to continue for another couple of months, and we have no recourse for any problems that the blasting may cause. And this is our property that we give the city money to for our taxes. We could use a little protection. Or another suggestion might be to perhaps give the residents who live in a certain area around Amazon a tax break or some monetary compensation to put towards our electricity bills, because the air is polluted enough down in that South End and we'll have to be running air purifiers more often due to the increased pollution from tractor trailers and other vehicles. And keep in mind, Amazon won't be affecting just those people there. It will be affecting everyone in this room. And one way it will do that is traffic. There will be approximately 675 vehicle trips in and out of Amazon per hour during peak hours. They'll be hopping on and off the highways. So, when you're fighting extra traffic on Route 8 and 84, day or night, doesn't matter, because Amazon will be running 24/7, you'll be thinking, what am I getting in exchange for this? And in any event, it's like an insult to the residents of this city, especially the people of the South End, that the city seems to keep saying to Amazon, please take all our beautiful land for a joke amount of money, take advantage of us, and we get nothing for it but a messed-up city. I understand the argument that Amazon may become a big taxpayer, but they also might be getting big tax breaks for a number of years. I have yet to hear any specifics about it. Then, fine, the city can still benefit from extra money in whatever other ways that you see fit. Thanks for listening.
Next speaker from 1400 Mirdon Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Mirdon Road. As far as this Amazon goes, it's $325,000 as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. And this is under consideration. This is not a done deal. So, when you say under consideration, especially with LLC and everything else, it's something that we could renegotiate. And I kind of agree with this lady back here, because we should not be selling stuff for, you know, peanuts, if you will. We should be selling things for more money. Because, you know, in Waterbury, there was a big article the other day about people not doing so good with their families and running on hard times. And because circumstances prevailed, people just can't afford things that much anymore, you know? And so, this is something I think that we should really look and take in consideration. And maybe, you know, with the mayor here and other people from the Members of the Board of Alamon and people here from Corporation Council, along with the public, we should keep a keen eye on this whole situation. I understand Amazon's going to come in. Majority of Amazon's going to be on the other side of Nogatuck. I told you before, I used to live in Nogatuck, and I'm back here in Waterbury. And so, majority of the traffic's going to go on the other side. It's not even going to come nowhere near. But as far as the blasting and everything goes, I believe people have a right to know when they're going to be blasting and how it's going to affect their lives and their property. And maybe you should turn around and give people a tax break if it's going to affect their property and their lives in that circumstance area. I think that's something you should consider. But when I look at this $325,000, I don't know if anybody ever went up there and looked at the property. I don't know how big the lot is, if it's a small lot. Maybe it's smaller than this room. I don't know. Maybe it's bigger than this room. I haven't been up there, to be honest with you. I don't know if any of you Members of the Board of Alamon ever been up there and take a look and gander around, see what's going on with inland and wetlands and everything else up there. So, I would really look at this, and I would talk to, which I like Mike LeBlanc, by the way, I think he's a good man. I would talk to him and the mayor and Corporation Council and say this, since this is under consideration, ladies and gentlemen, maybe we could work something out to get a little bit...
What they're planning there? Why are we selling them a piece of land? We need to know what they're doing, why they're doing it. Is it within the policies, the procedures, the specs of our city, or is it not? The sale was proposed some time ago, and Amazon then said, nope, we've got to wait. We need more time. My question is, more time for what? For why? Understandably, it's logical to incorporate a piece of land that's attached to theirs that they may be able to use and not leave as a wild area. But 17.3 acres is pretty good for wild. And I had heard that there were issues with wetlands up there. So, what's that about? What are the details? Is it to expand the building size? If so, how does that fit into our zoning? Is it to expand parking? Is it to expand and make a different entrance or exit? That was questioned at the first meeting that we had with Amazon. They had one way in, one way out. I raised the question of, in an emergency, where's your second emergency entrance and exit? The question was never answered. If we are going to do this and we're going to allow to expand them further, what about traffic studies? What about pollution control studies? What about environmental studies? We are now talking about, I don't know if anybody looked out the window on Saturday afternoon, but I had two inches of rain in less than 15 minutes. Water was everywhere, and that's a small slope compared to what it's like at Amazon. What are they doing up there to fix that? Questions have been raised regarding protection of residents. I feel the blasts at my house, 45 Pier Street, which is off of Platts Mill, off of Bristol Street. My house shook. My dogs barked. That's a long way from the site, which I don't say is unfair to believe, because we have ledge and sound waves carry through the ledge. What are we doing about that? Are we worried about the arteries that go from there? Let's face it, if a truck gets stuck somewhere, they're going to take a detour. And where's the detour going to be? And how many more trucks? How much more pollution in an overburdened city? And one that I will add, having found out just this last week, Waterbury's in a very interesting place. Our car insurance rates are being raised because of all the accidents and car thefts in Waterbury. Well, if we're going to be bringing in big trucks and more cars, how many accidents more will there be? And how much more will our rates rise? What about congestion on Route 8? It is there many days now. Are they going to get off Route 8 and go through town? They're not supposed to, but who's going to prevent them from doing it? Especially with the changes that we're going to see in Route 8 and 84 with exits and entrance ramps already being closed. What are disaster plans for this place? How are police departments, our fire departments, what are we doing to look at? You have a major tractor-trailer accident that tips over, like we've seen this weekend in other parts of the state. What's going to happen? And do we have access up there for fire trucks and emergency vehicles? That question hasn't really been answered. Yet they're blasting, yet they're adding more property. And this is the second big piece of property that they are going to be interested in. What are they doing with it? That's my question. Find out. First, make sure it's within the city statutes and laws and policies, and then make a decision. We are at a disadvantage to say we're for it or against it tonight, because we can't find the information to support what the plan for that area really is and how it's going to affect us positively or negatively. Thank you.
That's the last speaker tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing scheduled for 5:30 PM. I apologize, I should have mentioned the 5:38 PM public hearing involving landlord registration. That is going to be withdrawn. We're going to also pull the public hearing because of the language needs to be changed. And there's no sense having the public hearing on something that language is going to change. So, that would have been old business, unfinished business number four. That's going to be withdrawn. And with that, we will move on to our next public hearing scheduled for 5:35 PM for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to the proposed amendments to Section 37.071 and 37.073 to the Waterbury Code of Ordinances relating to the department heads and designated management employees, as submitted by Paul K. Rouski Jr., Mayor of City Waterbury. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condas.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. My name is Paul Condas. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. This ordinance will align the charter with the state law. Please vote to approve.
Next speaker from 1400 Mirdon Road, Martin Spring.
I just have to say, I think it's a good ordinance, and I think it's something we should consider looking at. And if we need to tweak it, make any changes, I think we should talk to Members of the Board of Alamon and the caucus, if you will, both Republican and Democrat, and also Corporation Council and the attorneys, to make sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. Because there's a lot of ordinances come in, and people don't know what the ordinance is about. I myself, I went on the web and I couldn't find it. I'm not going to mention Alamon's name, who happens to be a good friend of mine and a Democrat, by the way. Anyways, and I'm not ashamed to say that. And he gave me a lot of good, you know, vibes about it and let me know exactly what's going on. And we couldn't really talk too much about it, because, you know, the meeting had to start. So, I think if it's anything that's going to be worthy for the city and it's going to help us, then go for it. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing scheduled for 5:35 PM. And we will open up the public hearing scheduled for 5:42 PM for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to proposed amendments to Section 96.120-999 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances relating to fouling of public places by dogs. Mr. Conway?
First speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condas. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. My name is Paul Condas. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. Please vote to approve this ordinance, as this is another quality of life issue that is getting out of control here in the city. And obviously, we have to, our citizens must be incentivized to comply with these ordinance. Thank you. Please approve.
Next speaker from 1400 Mirdon Road, Martin Spring.
Again, I just think this is a good ordinance about the dogs, because being president of the Waterville Community Club, we had a lot of complaints about people having dogs running loose, not on leashes, and running through, you know, the parks and everything and doing their business. And, you know, we have a lot of kids playing over there. If you go to Waterville Park, you see a lot of people playing football, baseball, basketball. And, you know, it's hard for the people to go around, especially with the young mothers and adults bringing their kids around with their little carriages and everything, and they got maneuver back and forth all over the place. And then you got people that are working for the park department. They're doing the best they can. And so, I mean, plus it's a health issue. I don't know why anybody would let your dog go in any area, I don't care where it is, but especially in the public place, where people congregate and kids go and have a good time, and they go to the play skate and everything else, and let them do their business, right, you know, right on the grass and don't even care. Because if you go out to Wilka, right, I don't live too far from Wilka, and by the reservoir, if anybody gone out there, it's a beautiful place you could walk all the ways around, and they got little stations for the dogs or cats or any animal you have. It's mandatory that you have to pick that stuff up and clean it up. Because, you know, this is something that should have been looked at a long time ago. And if the mayor and Corporation Council Members of the Board of Alamon are looking at this, I commend each and every one of you, because something's got to be done. It's gone too far for too long. And we had so many people, like, God rest his soul, Bonnie Rentis, okay, and Litter Blight Commission. I remember when I had my TV show on, Nogatuck Valley Viewpoints, her and Rob Pietro, used to come on, constantly talking about litter blight and everything else in the city of Waterbury, and always trying to clean things up. So, again, think about this. This is a very, very important issue. It's a health issue, and something we should really support and move forward with that. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing scheduled for 5:42 PM. And we will open the public hearing scheduled for 5:46 PM for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to regarding proposed new ordinance concerning cigarette dealer licenses. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condas. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. Again, my name is Paul Condas. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. Changes to this ordinance will align it with the state law, as it should be. Please vote to approve.
Next speaker from 1400 Mirdon Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Mirdon Road. As far as this goes, I think this would involve some vape shops and maybe some illicit activities going on throughout the city of Waterbury. Because I remember, a long time ago, I would hang out with some people, and I would drive around, and people would just go out and want to buy cigarettes, and they'd just go out and buy three or four cigarettes. I don't know if anybody ever experienced that, along with vapes. And I said, why wouldn't you just go out and just buy three or four cigarettes and not go out and buy a pack of cigarettes? And I don't want to name the brand, but they everybody know what I'm talking about. And so, that's something I think, you know, the police should look into, and the Members of the Board of Alamon should look into, and the mayor's office, because this is something that I think is highly recommended, to give us some tough consideration and make sure that, you know, no shenanigans are going on, if you will, that the people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and make sure they have a license to sell the cigarettes, and then just keep an eye on them. Not to say you have to watch people all the time, but just say, hey, look, we want to make Waterbury a better place to live in. We love our city. We lived here the majority of our lives. A lot of us went into service and we came back home. And, you know, we still love our city, and we're here. We're staying here, raising our families. So, I think you should look into that, especially, like I said, when you have people coming and going in the stores and only buying three or four cigarettes. I don't know if because their lack of money or whatever, maybe the cigarettes are too expensive. But the bottom line is, people are doing this, and they happen to be with a lot of vape shops. And I've seen things going on in vape shops that I think the police should, you know, really scrutinize and look at that, and get involved, and maybe work with the communities at large and community club members and people within the community and citizens of Waterbury, and, you know, help Waterbury make a better place to live in by making sure that these things that are going on right now, that are going to be done on the up and up, and it's going to be done legally, not illegally. And so, I know the mayor would agree with me on that, and Members of the Corporation Council, and I know all you Members of the Board of Alamon, both Republican, Democrat. I know you people for a long time. You're all good folks. I like each and every one of you. So, I'm not here to play politics. I'm just saying, let's take care of the citizens and move forward with something good for a change. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing scheduled for 5:46 PM. And we will open up the public hearing scheduled for 5:50 PM for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to proposed new ordinance concerning hotels and lodging houses. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condas. Once again, Mr. President, members of the Board. My name is Paul Condas, and I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. This is a sensitive subject. We know that rooms rented by the hour cause only one thing, and that's problems. This new process is clearly stated, and this ordinance should be adopted. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Mirdon Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Mirdon Road. You know, I purposely picked up this article, the Waterbury mayor wants to ban people from renting hotel rooms by the hour. The Chief Spagnola agrees with that, and I assume the Waterbury PD agrees with that. I agree with that. And I think this is something we should all work together, regardless of what party we're affiliated with. It doesn't matter. You know, take into consideration, we're all citizens of the city of Waterbury. You know, we should be working as a team, if you will, and helping people out, because I know there's people congregating around these places, and it's unsolicited activity, if you will. What it would be involve prostitution, drugs, gambling. There could be so many different things, a variety of things, array of things, if you will, what people are doing in these motels. Because I even said to myself, why the heck would anybody go there and just rent a room for one hour? I'm not trying to deter anybody from coming in the city. We got some beautiful motels and hotels in the city of Waterbury, run by some fine people, individuals. And so, we're not looking to stop them from running their business, because I am pro-business. Everybody is pro-business. And we want to see things on the up and up. So, when people come in and they say, well, you can't come into the motel. Yes, you can. But if you turn around and now look on the other side of the coin, and they say, well, I only want to rent the room for an hour or two, because, you know, it might be some legitimate reasons. Maybe the guy's a salesman or the woman's out there doing things or something. I'm not talking about illegal activities. Maybe some good things, and they just want to take a break and rest. And then what are you going to say? You can't turn around and come to Waterbury, and you can't be in the motel for over an hour or less than an hour? can't be in the motel for over an hour, or less than an hour, whatever. I mean, I think you're, you're violating people's rights in a way. I mean, I feel, you know, I, I would feel like, wow, man, you're turning around and telling me that I can't go with my family or something. I'm not saying I want to go for an hour. But, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. But the bottom line is, if I'm in there, you know, I mean, what business is it of anybody's, what I'm doing? I, I understand what people are saying. I'm not trying to addict myself. I, I know I sound like I am. But you gotta look at both sides of the coin. You guys got a decision to make. You're not gonna violate anybody's legal rights to come in here and pay money to go and rent a hotel, regardless if they're gonna be there for one hour, two hours, three hours, four hours, five hours. You just, you know, you gotta take that in consideration. And maybe you should change the language on this, and talk to members of the corporation council, if you will, because it's illegal. I'm in the city of Waterbury. And talk to a few other people and get their perspective view. And I don't see too many people from the community here speaking, and I wish to God they were. Because, you know, I belong to the Waterville Community Club. I'm president. But I'm not speaking as president of the Waterville Community Club. I'm just speaking as a citizen of the city of Waterbury. And I think something, you know, is, this is a good ordinance. Again, it, it should be looked, looked at and scrutinized. And again, you know, you got the police chief who according to newspaper likes this. I imagine the Waterbury PD likes this too. I know the mayor likes it, and I commend the mayor for his efforts. And I just think there's things in here that you should really look at. But when you say right here, the headlines, Waterbury Mayor wants to ban people from renting hotel rooms by the hour, that to me would be a red light going up to people. Think about it, who want to come to the city. They might look at this and say, you know, what is the city doing? What are they saying? That we can't come in Waterbury? And we can't rent the hotel room now? Because that's what the headlines make it look like. You read the headlines, that's what it makes it look like.
One minute.
So, I would really turn around and look at this ordinance and say, yes, we do want people to come in here, but we want people to come in here, you know, at a good steady pace, and come in here to do good things in the city of Waterbury, not come here and create mayhem and problems for the city and the police. You know, some motels here in the city of Waterbury, a couple right down the street. I don't want to mention their name. I don't want to be libel. But they have been in and out of that motel with prostitution, with drugs, with gangs, with gambling, with all kinds of illegal activities. So, you guys should watch that and pay attention to that, and work with the mayor and his administration, and members of the board of aldermen. Thank you.
Next speaker from 283 Maybrook Road, Amanda Nardozzi.
Good evening, Amanda Nardozzi, 283 Maybrook Road. Members of the board of aldermen, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the executive director of Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury. At Safe Haven, we work every day with survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. The issues before you tonight, the ordinance to prohibit hourly or short-stay hotel and motel rentals, is not just a policy discussion. The survivors we serve, it's a matter of safety, dignity, and justice. We know from both national and local evidence that hourly hotel rentals are a direct pipeline for crime and exploitation. Traffickers and abusers rely on hourly rentals to move victims quickly, stay anonymous, and avoid detection. These rooms are not a place of rest. They are the very sites where abuse and trauma happen. The data speaks for itself. Up to 80% of commercial sex trafficking, trafficking incidents occur in hotels, and 75% of survivors report being exploited in hotel rooms. Here in Waterbury, both the mayor and the police chief had confirmed that the hourly rentals are linked to prostitution, drug activity, gambling, and sex trafficking, all of which drive crime in our city. And while the 2022 state law in Connecticut took a step by banning discounted rates for 12 hours or less, it didn't go far enough. The ordinance closes the loophole that fully banning hourly stays and allowing the city to invoke fines per violation. I also want to highlight an important gap. In Connecticut, hotel and motel employees are required to undergo human trafficking training. The front desk staff are taught to recognize red, red flags, victims being checked in by someone else, guests with no identification, and repeated, repeated short stays are signs of abuse. Yet, at the establishments that allow hourly rents, those warning signs are often ignored because money takes priority. By permitting these hourly stays, we are not just looking the other way. We are enabling traffickers to exploit victims with impunity. For our city, the stakes are high. At Safe Haven, we see the rippling effects every day. Survivors trapped in cycles of exploitation, and our community living with the visible impact of prostitution and drug activity. Law enforcement is stretched thin by preventable crime. This ordinance gives us a tool to disrupt those cycles. It will make Waterbury less attractive to traffickers and criminals, reduce the burden on our police, and most importantly, protect victims who serve better than to be hidden away in an hourly hotel room. I want to acknowledge there are some legitimate cases for short-term lodging, such as, you know, long-haul truck drivers, airline crews, and other travelers. But those situations are the exception, not the rule. The overwhelming reality is that hourly hotel stays are being exploited for crime. And Waterbury cannot afford to look the other way anymore. Other cities, including Louisville, Kentucky, Howard County, Maryland, have already taken the step and seen positive results. Waterbury should join them in showing we put public safety and human dignity first. On behalf of Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury and the survivors that we serve every single day, I urge you to pass this ordinance. It will save lives, reduce crime, and send a clear message that Waterbury will not tolerate human trafficking or exploitation within our community. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 23 Fairview Street, Douglas Livingston.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Douglas Livingston, 23 Fairview Street. Speaking specifically to what is happening right now in the city of Waterbury, as far as the crime and all the different things that everyone is trying to make happen here. I want us to stop dancing around it. It is not a sensitive subject. It is a real subject. Crime is taking place. And I'll say it, Big Apple Motel, sue me. Sue me. Big Apple Motel, we all know it. And this is why 622,000 people a month follow the Waterbury Times, for those that are familiar with the Waterbury Times. Because I'm gonna say what it is. We absolutely, I wasn't even aware that this could have been a law. This should absolutely take place. No one, I'm sorry, I didn't want to get emotional about it. No one is renting a room for an hour. There's no traveling salesman. It's not 1955. Like, wake up. They are trafficking women. They are doing crack. They are selling drugs. You want to know why? I know. I live over there. Has anyone in here stayed in the Big Apple Motel? Raise your hand if you have. I have. So, I'm telling you, please make this be the step one. Because if this is just the thing you guys are doing, I hope you guys, I hope this is like one foot, and then there's helicopters coming soon. Because I live over there. And technically, it kind of is Hillside Section. It's like our front porch of the Hillside Section. I gotta walk past it every morning. And every morning, I see the same nonsense over there. So, everyone else that owns hotels, calm down. No one's coming for your, okay, relax. The city of Waterbury, specifically the district that I live in, the 5th District slash Willow is in the 5th District. We don't have problems like dogs pooping. We have problems like people dying in the streets because we have a hotel right there that everybody knows what's going on. So, I super applaud this. And that energy that you all just seen me have, take some of it. Everybody in this room needs some of it. Because we don't live in a little town. We live in the city of Waterbury. If you didn't know, they called it the Dirty Water. And I know you guys think it's because of crooked politics. No, it's not. Have you been around Waterbury? Seriously. So, I encourage more actions like this. I encourage you guys to get tough. Listen, if you're scared, it's okay. I'm not. I'll talk tough for you guys. You got my back. I, I'll talk all the trash you want. Drug dealers, stop coming to Waterbury selling drugs. DM Livingston in the Waterbury Times says so. Because the board of aldermen, those that'll still be here, have, have, have our back here. This is the energy I want. I don't like coming down here. I normally home, live streaming this with the followers of the Waterbury Times, those that know what the Waterbury Times is. But I decided to come down today because this is important to me, and to show you guys that it's not just for show. I don't like this to be on camera. You think I like this? You think I like to come down here and talk about stuff like this? I wish my city was having beautiful things I could talk about, and dog parks, walking around, and, but no, we don't. You know what's gonna happen while you guys finish this meeting and I walk home? I'm probably gonna walk past somebody ODing. I'm gonna probably walk past that same hotel we're not talking about with some illegal activity taking place. So, that being said, I'll calm back down and be smiley, welcome, 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 DM Livingston. But you all just need to know that that's inside here. So, don't let the smiles on social media trick you or fool you. Also, please stop thinking it's just Facebook. Everybody knows the Waterbury Times represents Waterbury. Because I'm out there on the streets. And if anyone that's on the other side of the law feels any type of way about that, again, everybody knows who I am and where I'm at. You guys can have the rest of your minutes back. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing schedule for 5:50 PM. And we will call to order the regular meeting of the board of aldermen. If everyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, a true republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the business of justice and honor.
Alderman Else. Alderwoman Cavallo. Alderman Dorso. Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Ujim.
Present.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Talladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
14 present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda would be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our city sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Condes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. I will be reading from some notes tonight, something I don't normally do. And I want to make sure that I'm very accurate on what I say. A couple of meetings ago, Alderman Jack Alsepp questioned the tax-exempt status of the closed church and rectory that most call Saint, that most call Saint Pete's, but actually is officially called Mary, Mother of the Church. It caught my attention, as I didn't like the proposal to remodel the Roberto Clemento dual-language school with a rapidly deteriorating church and rectory on the property. I actually referred to it as a dual-campus situation. I started looking into this, and was confident that my research was complete and accurate. I contacted Alderman Alsepp on Monday, and on Tuesday, I contacted the corporation council with the same information. According to Connecticut State statutes, 12-81 and 12-88, a closed-down church and rectory, closed for over a year, can be put on the tax roll because the entity that owns the building and owns the property is not the reason for the tax-exempt status. It is the use of that property and the use of that building which grants it the tax-exempt status. There are several cities in the state that have done this already. And recently in Milford, a church close to downtown, where if you're familiar with Milford, the parking situation is horrendous, decided to rent out parking spaces in the city. The tax assessor sent out a tax bill for the parking lot square footage because that property was no longer being used for a tax-exempt purpose. It continued to allow the tax exemption on the church. Of course, as always, these bills were challenged, as is anybody's right to do so. But some were paid, and even more are being paid now. Other towns that have challenged this are Richport, New Haven, Hartford, where I was surprised to find that in the last six years, they've closed 27 churches down in Hartford. It's a matter of record. That's a lot of properties sitting there tax-exempt. I am respectfully asking Mayor Penaruski to instruct the corporation council to fully vet this, and instruct the tax assessor to assess these two buildings in anticipation of the city prevailing in this matter. I would also ask this board, under the good of the order, to ask the same. Then, and only then, can we get these properties and any others in the city that may no longer qualify for tax exemption back on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Back again, 1400 Merritton Road. Before I speak, I only got a few minutes.
Just state your name, sorry.
Yeah, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritton Road, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705. Before I go on to speak of what I came down here for, it's something you had on the agenda going back to August 11th. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here. I had some other obligations. But I just want people to know, I am definitely in support of this new ordinance, especially about the dogs, okay? And I gave my reason why, and the hotels, and motels in the city of Waterbury. But I just want to make sure we're not gonna have anybody, you know, feels, oh, they're, they're being, you know, misled, if you will. Okay? And that's all I wanted to say. Just want to make sure that people know exactly what we're talking about, where we're coming from. Okay, now, on your August 11th agenda, I had some proposal that I brought up, and it says, recommendation, the Waterbury Board of Aldermen and the local corporation council should implement a citywide fairness commuter tax to help residents contribute to the high cost of public services. The reason why I put that up is because there's people living here in the Waterbury making about $35,000, $40,000 a year. And there was a big article in Waterbury, almost seemed like it's saying between the haves and have-nots, and people that really can't afford anything because expenses are so very high. So, whenever you guys go ahead and vote for anything with any tax increase, I hope you people would take that in consideration. So, I had something here that, this was my original proposal, and this was sent out to the members of the board of aldermen, and I believe that they have this. And I wrote this back in 7/1825, July 18th. Have the members of the Waterbury Board of Aldermen, whom are legitimate legislators, along with local corporation council, implement or create a fairness citywide commuter tax based on current salaries, income, or a percentage earned by individuals regardless of their current employment, either appointed, employed, or in other administrative capacities by the city of Waterbury, whom choose to reside elsewhere and live outside the city limits. They should contribute in some way to the high cost of all public services, example like police, fire, sanitation workers, teachers, administrators, administrators, and a fairness commuter tax would help share the burden of high taxes imposed on many city residents, homeowners, landlords, including local businesses here in town. Now, again, I don't want you guys to misconstrue what I'm saying. All I'm saying is, we don't have a residency law in the city of Waterbury. We used to have it. They said it a long time ago, and that was done away with by, they said there was taking people's rights away. You were violating their constitutional rights, telling them where they can and cannot live. And so, that went to the wayside. So, all I'm saying is, I agree, you shouldn't be able to tell people where they can live. But I said before, to many of you people, and for the firemen that live here, and the policemen, and the teachers, and everybody that works in the city of Waterbury, for the city of Waterbury, I commend each and every one of you. I said this before, and I'll say it again, regardless of if I'm a veteran or not. The bottom line is, this is it. If I was a younger man, I would definitely would be a Waterbury PD or a fireman, and I'd be more than happy, more than happy to stay in the city of Waterbury and raise a family and pay my taxes. And all I'm saying is, we have to make things more fair in the tax situation in the city of Waterbury. Because I just think that we're overburdened right now with sometimes high unemployment, but I know we have high taxes. I know my rent just went up on my house, in my place where I live, my rent. Okay, we had to sell the house because we couldn't afford anymore, and it broke my heart to sell our home.
One minute.
But we had to do what we had to do. And now I have old cars, and my taxes went up on the old cars. Because I look, ladies and gentlemen, Because I looked, ladies and gentlemen, at my old bills from last year, and I told the misses at home, "Look at this. Our car taxes were a lot cheaper. Now look at them." And all you people, not all of you, but some of you voted for a tax increase in the city of Waterbury. Now, I know what they went by, they went by the blue book years ago, but now they're going by the manufacturer's book. So they're kind of like contradicting what they're saying, you know? Because why are you going up on taxes and hurting people when I know unequivocally there's people living in Waterbury, north end, south end, whatever, even in Waterville, living on $35,000, $40,000 a year? And you know what they got up for their curtains? They got bed sheets. Drive around Waterbury, and I don't care what color, race, creed you are. Why are people having, American citizens having bed sheets to cover their windows?
That's time.
Thank you. Between the haves and have-nots. Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Savaska.
Sharon Savaska, 45 Pear Street. I thank you for this opportunity. A couple of follow-up questions. I had contacted the wastewater plant about the manhole cover on Bristol Avenue extension. There's no action yet. It's still buried under gravel. I have a question about lead in the city. Based upon the information that I'm coming across, we have a considerable amount of lead pipes still in the city. And I would ask if perhaps when the next edition of the Waterbury Bulletin comes out, or Brass Bulletin, if maybe this can be addressed. What does this mean for our city? Where is this happening? Are we safe? Are we not safe? The next question I have is dealing with this ridiculous situation in Connecticut where Waterbury is being put in one of the highest categories for crime regarding automobiles and accidents. And I have questions. I want to know why. How does this compare to other cities and towns, either in Connecticut or in the New England area? My insurance for auto went up $600 this year based on that alone. And maybe tweaking in a little bit that states that anyone over the age of eight, believe 65, they get to charge you more. How is that fair? There are just as many accidents with young people, middle-aged people, and whoever else. I think we need better statistics. I ask Waterbury to get involved in this. Where is the data? Not only how do we compare, but what are the cause of these accidents? How many are caused by out-of-state, out-of-town vehicles? And is Waterbury, are Waterbury citizens being held accountable for that? Because we shouldn't be. A lot of people use our roads. It's not our fault if they hit us. And it should not be counted against Waterbury as an accident unless there's a clear reason. And we don't know what the clear reason is or isn't. And in the state of Connecticut, as I've already said at a meeting last year, if a car hits you in the rear and runs away, it's not up against your license. But if you try to make a claim in a no-fault state, the insurance company says, "We're sorry. The accident happened. We can't collect from anybody, so we're gonna collect from you." You put a claim against us, and guess what? You'll be on a pool for five years, and you'll pay us back all the money. Is that fair? I don't think so. So how do we come across and get a solution to this? I'm asking us, you as a Board of Aldermen, to get involved. Waterbury's a good place. There are accidents everywhere. Waterbury should not be in the brink of being held more accountable than anyplace else unless the data is real for that reason. That's that part. Now, for a bigger problem, prospect medical. Let's remember, patients and families pay for the treatment they get there. The city of Waterbury suffers from the lack of taxes that this business never paid. I would suggest and strongly ask that you help us as citizens advocate for a never-again for-profit hospital, because my family was at the point of being hospitalized there. And I will go through just some of the things that happened in this for-profit business. And I ask that you help us. The closet drawer in the bedroom was broken. The door to a cabinet in the emergency room was broken. There is no fresh water other than what you get out of the tap for city water. They used to have bottled water. Now you have to bring it in. The hospital's short-staffed, and some staff members are clearly angry, and one of them took it out on me. Food choices are limited. Sandwiches aren't what you and I would call a real sandwich, especially in the ER. Phone calls to the hospital operator went unanswered. I let it ring 10 times, no answer. Bedside call bells are not answered. If they are ringing at the desk.
One minute.
That's appropriate. They get bounced from desk to desk to desk with the patient getting nowhere. There's no lounge chairs in the bedroom, in the patient rooms. My family member's food tray that goes over the bed was broken. It was to be fixed. They borrowed a tray from another bed, and it worked. It could be moved. Excuse me. These trays and the bed trays, if you call them that, are quite high, and they're made of pure wood. They can't be moved. It's dangerous to move. When another patient came into the room, they took the bed tray that worked and said, "Oops, one tray per bed. Sorry, you have to deal with what you have." So where did this family member have his tray? He was eating off his tray on the bed. There are many other things that are broken. I was told I would receive calls from staff members each day. I received two calls out of the days that he was admitted. A procedure was canceled because of confusion. There's a shortage of supplies. There's no lounge chairs in the bed, in the patient rooms now. It's just a chair that doesn't have wheels, like what you're sitting on up there. No ability to elevate your legs, no ability to rest in them, and they are hard. The hospital admits it's short on supplies.
That's time.
What's gonna... I have one question, and I want the Board of Aldermen to please look into this. At the sale, what's going to happen if that hospital has to close? Where are we gonna go? I had a hard time finding on Friday what emergency room to go to. Saint Mary's was full. Bradley couldn't take us. There was one left. And that's not enough of an opportunity. Please do something. Thank you.
Next speaker from 140 Holly Street, Penny Cave.
Penny Cave, 140 Holly Street. I live adjacent to the bombings of every day, all day, at Amazon. The joke was at 4:30, you'd get blown off your couch, deck, whatever. Even our friends in Alabama knew about it when they came up to visit a couple weeks ago. It's bad. I mean, today, there was four or five blastings. And 7:30 in the morning, the drilling starts. Day after day, sometimes on Sunday, they've been there. It's awful. It's absolutely awful. And what the hell will it be when it gets to trucks, people, cars? How much are they going to pollute our air? This is a no-win situation with them. And it's just sorry to say that it's in my backyard. It chased all the animals away. They used to come through our backyard at night. We'd watch them. They're gone. They took their homes. They took everything. The trees, everything. Whoever made this deal sure didn't live around here. It's just gotta stop. It's like headache day after day, and you gotta listen. You can't get away from it. Unfortunately, I'm home seven days a week for the last six months. When I got out of the nursing home and hospital, after five months, it's hell since they started. Something's gotta be done.
Next speaker from 23 Fairview Street, Douglas Livingston.
Hello, everybody. Douglas Livingston, 23 Fairview Street. So I came to speak at the, for what I spoke at, obviously, because I already spoke there. But then I said, well, I'm down here, I might as well do this, because I wanted to do this a little while ago to formally introduce the Waterbury Times to people, especially those that don't know or aware of who we are. So I want everyone to, especially you all, because it's important for you guys to be plugged into social media as respectfully, no tongue-in-cheek, I'm not being funny. It's certain age, I get it. You guys don't care. You don't live on social media. But the people that have problems and issues, that's where they're at. You have to be there, and you have to get over yourselves, and you gotta get on social media. You don't have to look at the Waterbury Times. Fine, pick something else. But you gotta know what people are complaining about so you know what they want, because they're not coming down here to say it, because they already said it all week long in comments. All week long, they're complaining about what's wrong in the first district, the second district, and then you guys want them to wait two weeks and come down here and talk for five minutes? They've been saying it all week. Get a Facebook page, guys. Seriously, like, I mean this. I'm not joking or nothing. You guys gotta come into the 21st century of legislating things and being in charge of your district. And while I'm at it, seeing I've uninterrupted it five minutes, I love this, your districts, your, people don't know you. I know this. I'm not bragging numbers. I'll show anyone that wants to see them. We almost hit a million people views, and this isn't people in Africa, I'm talking about people that live in Waterbury, see this face and hear my voice every single month. I probably know more about your districts than you. And some of you didn't even know who I was until today. That's disheartening to say the absolute least. And the mayor can attest to it. Since the day I started the Waterbury Times, I told the mayor, I said, "No matter what it looks like, it's gonna look all over the place. But bottom line is, I love Waterbury. I damn near probably die for the city if I had to." And he's sitting right there. He'll tell you if I said that or not. We were standing right there on Grand Street. I said, "Whatever it looks like, whatever it sounds like, it's never gonna look like Channel 8. It can't, because a 17-year-old is not gonna pay attention to it if it don't look like how it's looking right now." So I just asked you all, like I asked the mayor, trust the Waterbury Times and what I'm doing and what we're doing, and don't fight against it when I'm literally just here trying to help. Because if anybody can't figure it out, I'm a good talker, I'm a hell of a salesperson. I could just be making like $30 an hour selling cars or phones or something else, but that's like boring to me. I want to do something that's important, and I love my city, and I can't do what you guys can do, but you guys can do what I can do. So we could meet somewhere in the middle. There's five districts, but, you know, not one of us is smarter than all of us put together. And specifically to the fifth district, just, I joke a lot when I say this, but in all seriousness, like Willow Street is in the fifth district. I know it's, you know, we're districting, we're kind of up in the corner, and it's kind of like, is that the 73rd? Is it the 70? It's the fifth. It's the fifth, it's the 75th, it's the fifth. So like, we just, over there, we just want, and I super am now speaking as the president of the newly-formed Hillside Willow Grove Association, we super love what is happening. Thank you, Mayor, for pulling up over there. When I tell you, again, I live there. In the morning, it's like a neighborhood. Kids at the bus stop right after school. Boys were chasing girls yesterday, laughter. I heard noise, and I looked, and I thought it was gonna be something, the kids were playing in the street, and it was like, wow, okay, cool. So it's working, but you can't, you can't let up. Don't take your eyes off the ocean just because the tide went out, because it's gonna come back. You guys have to know that. And as long as I live over there, I'll do my part, my best. And again, use the Waterbury Times, even if it's just in a loose way to hop in there every now and then and look at the comments. People complain a lot, a lot. Now, some of it in one era or the other, but some of it is valid complaints. And also, that is a good way to kind of test out things before you just drop it on people. Just like, get a little more savvy, just get a little more tech-savvy, get a little more interactive with the people, and just be aware of what the people care about. Again, 600 and something thousand people, I can't wa, I won't get home. Someone's gonna yell "Waterbury Times" out the window. If you didn't know who I was before this conversation, like, just Google it and get more in touch with the city of Waterbury, because the Waterbury Times is super Waterbury. If you're a Board of Alderman and you didn't know the... I love you guys sincerely. I wish you guys the best of luck, and peace.
Next speaker from 178 Cook Street, Emma Taylor.
Emma Taylor, 178 Cook Street. I am here tonight to comment on the Greenville, Greenwood Avenue fix. I see the corner and stone on the right side of the street coming down has finally been installed.
I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Taylor, can you just speak into the mic a little louder?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I see the corner, commenting on Greenwood Avenue. I see it was fixed. I see the corner stone on the right side of the street that's been there for three months. They finally installed it into the ground. That's a good thing. I also watched them digging up the previously constructed side where the sidewalk was. They dug it back up. I just have an inquiry. My inquiry in mind wants to know, does the city have to pay for the fix of that corner? And what took them three months from the official pool open date to finish the other side? Also, I still think we need speed bumps right in front of the Fulton Pool, because they are still speeding up and down that street like they're on a raceway. So that's it for Greenwood. Question about the laundromat with the picture that I'm sending around, two doors up from my house. EverSource installed piping on the laundromat that started from the side of their building out into the sidewalk, and they placed a yellow pole in the sidewalk to protect the pipes. It's an eyesore. And once again, I need to mention, this is a residential area, not commercial. Does the city allow EverSource to do installations like this to the sidewalks? That's all I have tonight. And I did send something around so you could see it, but it looks horrible. And every morning I go out for my walk, I have to look at it.
Good evening, Board of Aldermen. The reason that I'm here is...
Just, I'm sorry, just your name and the address, okay?
Oh, sorry.
Just state your name and then the address.
My name is Francisco Abreu. My address is 4L Lyric Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705, Francisco. Good evening, Board of Aldermen. The reason that I'm here is for the thing that has happened recently in Waterbury, especially the shooting and the brass more twice, and a lot of killing people in Willow Avenue. And the news was talking about that Waterbury is on security. So I said, "What's going on with Waterbury?" So I came out to the city hall, and I find out, Board is the mayor. The Board wasn't the president for the Board of Aldermen for a long time. And I told him here, I said, "Board, what's going on here?" And then about one week or two week, they having a big meeting with the police commissioner, the mayor, the order authority, the department, tried to find out what is they going to do. So they find it out to going, you know, where the problem is starting. Willow, Willow and Norman, whatever areas is in Waterbury, that's where the problem started, so that's where they had to go. So now... So now they do it, they doing, they going to Willow, the police is over there, you know, a lot enforced there. I think so even in the last week, was even the FBI in Willow. So it's a lot going on in Willow and that area, then the mayor and the police commissioner, they know, they know what's going on. The only thing they have to work, they have to work overtime, you know, because the drug dealer, they don't sleep, they looking for money, you know? So the police and the authority here, they can sleep either to stop that problem. Why? Because the answer for the shooting and twice and the brass more, the answer, the police commissioner said, oh, no, they came here to fixing that problem. So how answer is that? How we, how we, how we can find it out? Where is the problem started, and they came to the more to, like, the cowboy, you know, the movie in the West, the past, and they were shooting, you know? And that's, it can be intolerant for the people, let's see, they, in Willow, it's in Willow the problem, because same thing happened in Willow, they, they going, they, they killing each other over there for drug problem. So they had to work really hard, they doing, and I congratulation the mayor, he went there, he is in the top of that problem, I think, I, I going to tell he to keep being, you know, that way, to doesn't get out the control from the Waterbury Authority. It's over there the problem, you know, the drug dealers, and now the Fanta Nino is in the city too. I see a couple people with Fanta Nino. If we let that drug come to the city, and we play with those drug dealer, forget about the city. If you see the new, that around the world, what Donald Trump is doing, try to stop that drug, going to South America, to Venezuela, we a lot of force over there to don't let that drug come here. So we have to do in the same thing.
One minute.
We have to do in the same thing in Waterbury, if we know it's from the area, so we have to go in with all the force there and control those drug dealers from Fanta Nino especially. Because if we do, if we are sleeping with them, or the authority are sleeping with them, the city will be destroyed. Only they can try one time, forget about. So that's the reason I here. I also, the mayor, the police commissioner, keep the police over there, you know, and the police community, I don't see them so frequently, so they have to keep talking with the people over there, try to, the police and the community work together. That's the solution, because right now, the police and the, and the community, they not together, so that's the between...
That's time, sir.
That's the between the problem, okay? Thank you, and I'll be next time here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 50 Kellogg Street, Bernadette Riddick.
Hi, my name is Bernadette Riddick. First of all, I would like...
And just your address, Ms., I'm sorry, just your address also.
Oh, 50 Kellogg Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. First of all, I want to gratefully thank the Waterbury Police Department for the attention that Willow Street is getting. And I say that on the heels of, I've been living there for about 50 years, first house my husband and I bought, and I've been there for 50 years, it's also a historic district. When we first moved there, we didn't know that we were the only people of color that lived in that historic district. Since then, I've watched it go downhill, I've called the mayor's office so many times, they must know my name just by the phone number. And I wanted to say, you know, thank you to the mayor for the work that has been done over there. But on the other side, I also have a few complaints. For at least 40 years, I have been calling the mayor's office, each mayor that comes in to bring some attention to the prostitution that's over there, they stop right in front of my house sometimes. When I get visitors, they stop the visitors, asking them if they want whatever they're, they're selling that particular day. That has slowed down some, but it's taken over 45 years to get the attention in that historic district, which I don't think is fair. The other thing, when I call the mayor's office, I've asked for speed bumps, maybe that would slow down some of the prostitution and the drug dealing that's going on there. I've been told that they can't do that because I forget whatever the reasonings were. The second thing was, I've asked to have that street be a one-way street. The streets over are one-way streets, why isn't that catalog struggles so hard to get anything done? I've had at least three cars total in front of my house. I now own three properties on Kellogg Street, thinking that maybe that would be helpful to bring the neighborhood back the way it used to be. And to you, Mayor, when you came to the church that I belong to, you stated clearly that you had an open door policy, which I assumed an open door policy meant that when you come down, that you would meet with the mayor. But every time I've come, every time I've called, I'm being told that I can't meet with the mayor, there are people there, and I understand, you're a busy man, you've got a lot to take care of, and have done a great job so far. But I would like to sit down and have a conversation with the mayor, rather than have it be other people that's taking notes and requesting to meet with him. I would truly rather just sit down and do a face-to-face with you, because like I've said, I've been there for 50 years, and I've watched this neighborhood go from a striving historic district to what it is now, and I don't even have to mention as to what it is. And another gentleman talked about hearing kids play. I heard some kids playing outside about two weeks ago, and I was startled, because I, I thought there was something going on, a shooting or something, and then it dawned on me, there's actually kids playing outside now, and it sounded so good, I haven't heard it in, in many years. I have a 15-year-old grandson, which I'm really concerned about what's going on in the neighborhood. My daughters, which one is here, wants me to leave my home, but I refuse.
One minute.
Because I'm hoping that it comes back to be a thriving neighborhood the way it used to be. Again, thank you.
Next speaker from 25 Greenbow Street, Bruce Diamond.
Hey, everybody, I'll be very quick. My name's Bruce Diamond, I live here in Waterbury, 25, excuse me, 24 Greenbow Street, and I'm here on behalf of a client of mine, Jim Christian. His item is number six on the agenda, it's a request for a formal acceptance of a roadway and infrastructure, a very good project, he's all done with the work, it's gone through Planning Commission, it's gone through Public Works, and now we're just looking for this board to accept it, and Mr. Nerny did a great job guiding us through this process. That's all I have to say, unless anybody has any questions.
We're not, unfortunately, we can't ask you the questions during public speaking, so I don't know if you'll stay around for the item, I'm not sure, but, okay, thank you.
I'll stick around.
All right, thank you.
Next speaker from 51 Holmes Avenue, Patrick Zaljus.
My name is Patrick Zaljus, I'm an attorney with offices at 51 Holmes Avenue here in Waterbury, honorable chairman, members of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. Mayor. I'm here for the same item that Attorney Diamond is here for. I represent Dennis and Helen, Helen Keisius, who are here, and just to give you a little background on this, this matter was before you, back in December of 2022. It stems from a 1920 subdivision that was done, and there was a 50-foot paper street included in that subdivision that was never developed and never accepted by the city or transferred from the George Tracy Company Incorporated and Joseph A. Kukennis, who were the original developers. This, if you're not familiar, is on the west side of Waterbury, it's, the subdivision includes what has become Lakeside Boulevard West, Lakeside Boulevard East, with Larchmont Lake or Tracy's Pond in between there. And if you go up the road from Spartans, to the left of Spartans, that's Worcester Avenue. If you go up East Lakeside Boulevard, which is to the right of what used to be the JT Food Store, it's a convenience store now, Worcester Avenue is just about a, what would be a good-sized block up, and it connects Lakeside Boulevard East to Worcester Avenue, or it was supposed to. My clients in 1980 bought their home, which is, the address is 95 Lakeside Boulevard East, it's actually on the corner of Lakeside Boulevard East, in what was to be Mason Avenue, running, again, from Lakeside Boulevard East to Worcester Avenue. Attorney Diamond's client, James Christian, purchased property, he lives on Worcester Avenue, and purchased property, all the little lots that were adjoining that parcel that was never developed. He started developing it, it was being done without proper authorization, so that actually started around 2001. In 2014, we instituted litigation to make sure that it would be done properly and to determine who had rights to that 50-foot right-of-way and what was going to go on. That litigation started in a trial, ultimately, we reached a memorandum of understanding in 2019, and finally entered a stipulation and a judgment by the Superior Court in 2022, giving title to the 50-foot right-of-way to my clients, the Keisius's, and Mr. Christian. And a part of that judgment was that he had to pursue development according to the city standards through all the appropriate city boards and agencies. He did that, and it has been developed according to city standards. As Attorney Diamond said, it's met with all the approvals of all the boards and agencies involved, and at this time, as you can imagine, it's been a very long process, very, lot of, lot of differences of opinion along the way, but it's finally done. My clients are happy with the way that the street has turned out, I believe Mr. Christian is as well, it will afford him the opportunity to develop those other parcels, and so we're here this evening asking for this board's approval of that, which will add some tax-paying parcels to the city of Waterbury tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 216 Chestnut Hill Avenue, Bobby Riddick, Bobby T. Riddick.
Hello and good evening, my name is Bobby Riddick with 216 Chestnut Hill Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity. Oh, excuse me. Oh, goodness. Okay, that gives me something to hold, that's okay, so if my hands won't fidget. Can I get like 30 seconds back?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, great, so thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I wanted to echo many comments that I heard in standing here about the police presence in the command center and the special attention to the Willow area. I want to thank, thank you, thank you, Waterbury, for that. Again, I grew up in that area, and being able to walk down the street with peace and not being fearful of, you know, any, you know, anything happening, especially to the kids that are out there, thank you. And please, if we could somehow bring back, there was a, a particular precinct right there on Willow a few years ago, I think that really helped to kind of scale back some of the crime. If there's any way to bring back and maintain that attention there in that area, I'd be grateful, because once you guys go, they're coming back with a vengeance to recoup what they've lost, and fear will unfortunately be restored back into the community, but please maintain the presence. I wanted to also make a comment on, a gentleman also talked about access to meetings such as this. I did learn about this meeting from Waterbury Talks, which made me think about creating equitable access to meetings such as this. It's great information on your website, but how else do we get this information out to the community? People who may not be tech savvy to kind of navigate through the channels on your page, how do we, again, kind of make it more public, make it, consider the barriers that people may have to navigating our website and technology? And how do we, again, create equitable access to conversations such as this, so that people can also come, right, find what the barriers are to come into these meetings, and hopefully helping to break those down? And then also, are there opportunities to come to the community, such as I saw on Facebook in Waterbury Talks, where the mayor did come out and talk to the community and those members? So again, kind of also thinking about those creativities and opportunities to create access to these meetings. I also wanted to also bring to attention, or maybe I'm not as privy, to what is going on in the city of Waterbury for children, for teens, for adolescents, things that they can do besides our PALS Center, and I think the REC Center, where else can our teens go? Where else can our kids go in the community when they get out of school? And do they know about it, right? And again, if they're, these establishments are available in the community, what is the feedback from the youth, and do they attend? Do they like it? What other, how are we capturing that feedback? And how are we utilizing that feedback? Being transparent with that as well, just not saying, oh, we did a survey, or we did a questionnaire, but how is that information, that input being used to reinvest into our community, into our teens, into our adolescents, who at one point, the mall was a place that they could go? That may be unfortunately unsafe area right now, like, for, you know, hopefully, we can, you know, it could be a good, you know, a place again for teens, but what else can we do to offer those spaces for our teens in our area? I also wanted to mention, I think, just going back to my mom with the speed bumps, really kind of considering those areas where speed bumps, right, could really kind of help traffic. When she mentioned cars being totaled over her cars, her car was parked, and it got totaled three times because people were speeding up her street. Despite her ask to maybe consider the speed bumps, we're asking to consider that conversation again. But also, I think, my mom has had conversations, is, is Mr. David Simpson here? Oh, hi, hi. So she's mentioned conversations that she's asked about the sidewalk also on Kellogg Street, and we were just hoping that that will also maintain on your priority list. But thank you for this time, and please, please make this meeting more accessible. I found out from Waterbury Talks, how else can we get this conversation in this space? Just make it more available and more public to people who may not know how to navigate your website, may not be able, maybe have a, that could be a barrier, a website and technology, and just, you know, keep thinking about equitable access, it's different than equality, everybody has equal access to come here, right? But is it equitable, is there an equitable pathway to attending these meetings? So having that conversation, and I am glad to attend any other conversations, if you want to pick my rate, I love these conversations, but thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker tonight, Mr. Riddick.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, August 11th, 2025, regular meeting at the Board of Aldermen and public hearings, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman, Martinez, McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
Sure.
Hearing, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those favor approval, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Steve Shrag, and I happen to live in Plantville now, though I've lived in Waterbury for 40 years.
Unfortunately, Mr. Shrag, I can't, it, it has to be a Waterbury resident.
Why?
Because that's what, that's what it says, that's the rules.
It says where, the First Amendment?
It just says, that's, that's what the Waterbury rules are, that's our rules through the Board of Aldermen.
I couldn't stand for a matter of procedure to say that I should go last, but the idea that I should not be able to speak at all doesn't make any sense at all.
Okay, well, that's, that's what it is, that's what I've been told, and actually, if you'd like to have this discussion, this is not the time or place to have this discussion.
When is the time?
I would gladly speak with you in, after this meeting or any other time, but this is not the time, this is not the forum to have this discussion right now, so...
I'll be happy to have that conversation.
Okay, sir, all right, thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the mayor's report, mayor? Is that on? Okay. Does that work? Okay. Thank you. Just a couple things, and we can talk about the various agenda items and the ordinances, I know there were some comments on many of them, but when they come up, on this, I just wanted to say two things. I am sorry that you were unable, when you called, to get an appointment to come and see me, but if you call tomorrow morning, speak to Jennifer, I'll let her know you're going to be calling, and we'll get you an appointment. If you just stopped down... If you just stop down, it's hard to get in, because sometimes my schedule's full or I'm not here. But if you call, it may take a week or two, but we will get you an appointment, so, and I apologize for that. I do want to talk a little about the speed bumps as well. You know, we have put up some speed bumps throughout the city, mostly in front of parks, schools, and some churches. I know everybody would like to have them on lots of roads, but we can't just put them out on regular travel lanes. I mean, speed bumps are designed for traffic moving at about 15 miles an hour, and that's not the, the speed limit in the city, and it's not going to become the speed limit throughout the city. So if you put those out there, it just doesn't work well on normal travel lanes. There are things, we're working with Nogatuck Valley Cog to look at some traffic calming of things we can put in place that will help. Those are longer-term projects, and they require some effort, but we are looking at those as well. The other thing with speed bumps is unless you see them like you see them in parking lots or driveways, if you don't put them every 10 or 15 feet, people are going to hit them, and as soon as they get over them, they speed up again. So that's one of the issues with those. But we have been trying to put them in front of places where people are crossing the streets, and there's lots of students, and we'll continue to do that. They may all come up in the next month or so, because you can't leave them out for the plows either, so they have to come up in the winter when we plow the streets. As you know, Willow Street has been the site of two shootings very recently, and we do know that in that, several blocks around the lower Willow Street area, is, there's a lot of crime concentrated there. 20% of all of the crime in the city is occurring there. 25% of all of the violent crime in the city is occurring just in those few blocks, and 100% of the prostitution is occurring there. So it has become a real point of focus. We went out there with a net team, which is a neighborhood team that they do once a week, but we did it right after the, this is the most recent shooting, again, with the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Health Department, the Building Inspector, and several other departments within the city. And the goal is to get them each out there for a week, so there'll be about eight weeks of enforcement, so that we can get the whole issue out there and really start addressing some of these things. And two of the buildings have already been closed on Willow Street, I think 140 and 174 for violations. If they correct them, they'll reopen, but right now, they've been closed down and the residents have been moved out. The Command Center is there, that's making a difference, but that can't stay forever. That requires us to keep a police officer there 24/7 tied to that location. Eventually, we're going to have to return that to other use, but the chief has implemented walking beats in that neighborhood, and those we're going to continue and hopefully be able to expand them around. So we're going to continue that presence. It's also unlikely that we're going to create another precinct there. That creates somewhat the same problem. We have an officer, if the precinct is there, who's tied to that, without an entire troop there. However, there is a landlord in the area who has some office space that has become available, and he has offered it to the city for free to use, to the Police Department. And in conversations from the chief, we're going to be bringing it to the board, because we need you to approve it if we get it for free. There'll be an agreement that goes with it. But the ultimate use would be to have officers there sometimes, other city officials there at different times, so that it'll be a neighborhood presence that drive them out. So we are trying to get that done in a way that will keep them out of there. So we also know that once we do that, they're going to pop up in other places, and we're making, you know, making preparations to be aware of where that's happening and to get in there right-of-way and try to deal with it. I know, I'm sure you're right when you say 40 years. I can take responsibility for the last 18 months, and we're trying to get there. So, you know, it's, it's, crime is an issue, it's not unique to Waterbury. The real, the good news is the stats are down generally here. The crime is falling, but if you're in that area, that's a concentrated area for crime we're going to try to address it. So I just want you to be aware of some of those things that are happening. So with that, thank you, and I'm sure we'll be discussing some of these items later on. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. With that, before we go into our agenda, we do have a couple items to add to our agenda. The first item is going to be item number 15. It's going to be the resignation of Manuel A. Jesus from the Zoning Board of Appeals. That is going to be received and placed on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to add to the agenda.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of them in observance.
I just have a question. Why are these being added late? Was it just timing, or?
The resignation, it just came in late, but because it is time-sensitive, we're looking to fill it. The mayor is, the next item is going to be, the mayor's intends to fill it, restricted and unrestricted appointments, so it did come in after our deadline, but we figure it's important to get these positions filled as fast as possible.
And then is 15 replaced on, is being placed on file, or can we have a discussion? Because I'm, I'm just trying to understand the background.
Yeah, as other, any other resignation, we just receive and place it on file. There's no action needed by us to, to make the resignation happen. We're just, we're just accepting it and recognizing that we received it, and that's all we need to do as a body.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Alderman Also.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I had the opportunity to work with Manny on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and he was a bright light and very professional, very thoroughly researched everything. I can't say enough about him. I think he's a great guy, and it's going to be a loss to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Hopefully, we can get somebody in there that will put the effort in for the details that Manny did. And I want to thank him for his time.
Thank you, Alderman Also. And as you can see from his letter, he is actually upset about it, having to resign, but that is in our, in our rules, so. Yes, yes, Mayor.
I do want to let you know that it is an issue within the existing statutes that doesn't allow people who are city employees to hold those board positions. We can change it, and so at some point, we may be coming to you to make those changes, but at this moment in time, that's the status of the law, and that's why he is resigning. Not because anybody's trying to push him out, not because we don't think he's doing a good job. I agree with you, I've known him for a long time. But that's, in looking at something else, if we became aware of that as an issue, and we're trying to address it, at some point, I expect that we'll be coming back to you with some amendments to the ordinances, and I hope at that point that you would favorably consider it in light of what's happening here. Thank you.
Hearing none, all of us in favor of adding number 15 to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item 15 is added. The next one is the mayor's item number 16, will also be received and placed on file. It's the mayor's intention, intentions to fill the restricted and unrestricted appointments to the boards and commissions. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to add item 16 to the agenda.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of adding 16 to the calendar, is received and placed on file, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item number 16 is added. There is a, item number three was worded on our agenda as a actual permission to apply for a state grant, the grant is in. Item number three should have, should have read to authorize the mayor to execute a commitment to a fund, a Connecticut Department of Transportation Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant in the amount of $3,100,000 for the purpose of executing a streetscape improvement project at North Main Street, from West Main Street to Phoenix Avenue, along with South Main Street, from Scoville Street to Grand Street. You will see that the packet does read that. This grant was, Mr. Nardozzi, Dr. Nardozzi came to us a while back with this grant. Grant's approved, and we're just looking for the mayor to execute it. So should read that way. And with that, we will take up unfinished business items two, three, five, six, and seven, as a committee of the whole. And with that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to reserve ourselves into a committee of the whole?
Show move.
Second.
Alderman Martinez, thank you, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of resolving ourselves in the committee of the whole, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we are sitting as a committee of the whole. Unfinished business, item number two is request the approval of a purchase and sale agreement with Amazon.com Services LLC for undeveloped land located at 305 Gray Hill Road and Zero Sheridan Drive, Nogatuck, Connecticut, Waterbury-Nogatuck Industrial Park, Lot 2, for consideration of $325,000 submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Discussion. All the women's in.
Thank you for recognizing me. So actually, the public speaking had some questions that came across my mind as well. Okay. The price of the sale, what is the market value of that piece of property? Not the assessed value?
Those are appraised values that are under your package, and not the assessed value. So that's what the, the assessments are. Just a little background. So when we put out the RFP for that parcel, and that's how Amazon got chosen, that's actually a, an industrial park that we've been trying to develop for a long time. You may remember, at one point, it was going to be a dog track. At one point, they were going to take the stone out of there, there were a couple of other iterations. There's going to be a casino there at one point that they were proposing, and none of it ever came really to fruition. One point, I think ONG was just going to mine the rock out of there, but it turns out that there's good rock and bad rock, and that's bad rock. You can't use it for road purposes, so it has no real value. So we went out again, the city went out again to do this, an RFP in conjunction with Nogatuck. It's sort of a joint venture, because even though we own the property, over half of it sits in the borough of Nogatuck, and Amazon was the successful developer. As part of that was an easement over this 17 and 1/2 acres. At that point, the city just decided they weren't going to make it part of the package, but there had to be an easement for access in and out. So Amazon currently has access by an easement over this parcel right now. At some point during the process, they came to us and said that they were interested in acquiring it. I believe they don't really have any intention to develop it at this point. It's a very difficult parcel to develop. I think that's kind of why the city held it back at the time, but we've since looked at it and made a determination that it's really not going to be particularly good for anything else going forward, especially with the easement through it, because that affects the use of the property going forward. And so they came and they were looking to purchase it, based on what we have as the appraised value here. It probably doesn't have much of a market value because of that easement running through it, but the appraised values here totaled about $310,000, and we arrived at a sale price of $325,000, and that's how we got there. If they take it, they'll be able to continue to access over it. We won't have any responsibility for the surrounding property. I believe they want it because they just want to make sure that nothing happens on that property that can potentially interfere with their easement, their access in and out. We, the easement would prohibit that, but if we own the surrounding property, there's theoretically something could be put there that they may consider to be an interference. So I think they just want to get it to make sure that they're not hindered in any way coming in and out of the property. But even if they don't buy it, we just continue to own it, and they will be able to access over it in perpetuity for as long as they are there at the facility. So that's kind of the background for it.
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of having Amazon come, however, the feedback from the public is like frightening. What are we doing to bond, or what is the contractors doing to bond for any cracked foundations and all this stuff from what we're hearing?
So just, again, just to be clear, this parcel has nothing to do with Amazon coming. They've got this purchase and sale agreement, they've signed it, they own the property, they are going through the permitting process, they're developing the property, they're following the law. There are laws in place about blasting and the times it can be done, the notices that have to be given, how often it happens. I don't know if they've upped it, but generally, it's been about once a day that they've been doing the blasting. Within certain parameters, they've inspected properties to see if they could be, if they are damaged, they'll pay for it. Outside of those, you know, they weren't required to go out to certain areas beyond a perimeter that's established based on what they're doing. So we continue to make sure that they're following the law. The fire marshal is in charge of overseeing it, and there's no indications that they're not doing it. I know, I know, and I appreciate this. It's, it's, it's an inconvenience, it's a real nuisance to people who live close to that. That is true. You know, when we did Carrington High School, there was an issue there. There was a lot of blasting that had to be done to get that school up and in there, and it's, it's really aggravating to the people who live near there, but it is part of what it takes to get that developed. So we're on it, we're continuing to look at it, and anybody whose property is damaged, you know, if they had it inspected, they'll come back and take a look at it. For others, they can make claims going forward on what's going to happen with it if the properties are damaged, but it's, it's the process. And this item that you really have tonight has nothing to do with that. If you vote this down, it doesn't change anything that's happening out there.
Right, but it's like our last chance to address problems and things that we can address as a board, because we've already approved Amazon. Like, we want the commerce to come into the city, but just like Carrington, we had cracked foundations and things that happened, so I just want to make sure that we're kind of looking out for the area.
They're prepared to deal with all of those things. They, I mean, there are requirements about what happens with blasting, and at this point, to the best of my knowledge, they're following all of those.
Do we have a infrastructure around the property? Have we looked at the streets? Like, what agreements do we have with Amazon to protect what's going on around, such as the tractor trailers on the streets? Like, are they going to create support on the roads? Like, how does, how does creating the new traffic with the heavy trucks and things, what are we doing to, or what are they doing to kind of prep us to bring in this commerce?
So they're working with the State Traffic Commission to get the permits to be able to do all of this. They have them, I'm assuming they have them in place at this point to do it. It's all been looked at by the state, that's who controls it. The access is going to be right there on and off the highway for them, I think is part of the, well, the, this was, you have to remember, this was already zoned as an industrial park. So, you know, as a matter of course, there's very little you can do to keep them from going through there. They're going to do it now. The idea is that they will continue to just take the truck traffic on and off, off the highway right there. That's why they're there, because they're hopping on and off the highway, and I think they're going to continue to do that.
And can we do anything about 7:00 AM drilling? Can we request that they do it an hour later?
Those are the times that are eligible to do construction work. There are times within windows in which you can do construction work, and 7:00 AM is the start time within our, within our laws here in the city of Waterbury.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
My other question is, I'd just like to hear, we have paperwork here from Stephen Shrag in the audience. Can you please tell me what this is about? I guess you're representing the Gil Martin Community Club?
No, Mr. Shrag. So Rule 12 in our Board of Aldmen states our, our rules, that you must be a resident or a taxpayer to City of Waterbury, that, in order to speak at our meetings, so.
In public speaking?
In, in public speaking, yes.
Right.
Yes, so this, we have taken it, we'll, we'll receive it and place it on file, but we're not, we're not taking any action on it. We're taking what he's given us.
We hear from, with all due respect, we have, we hear from people outside of our town and city all the time. I'd like to hear from him, if I can, please, Mr. President.
I think it would be, he can, he can do it if you want to ask him, but I would, again, remind you of one thing, that the item on the agenda is the acquisition of this acreage. It's not the Amazon project as a whole, so the discussion has to be limited to the item that you're dealing with. It's not a wide-ranging discussion about all of the other issues that are out there. You just need to be careful about doing that. I would, you know, suggest that to you, but if he has something to contribute to this on behalf of Gil Martin.
Mr. Shrag, does your subject matter, or is your conversation having to do with this piece of property?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on. If you're going to speak, come up to the microphone, state your name at least, and you don't live in the city. But just give us that.
My name is Schrag, I live at 36 Buckland Street, Unit 14 in Plansville. However, I lived in Waterbury for 40 years. The only way that that might be relevant to the specific piece of property you're talking about here is, the information request I did at the city was regarding the overall Amazon site, which was, who was on the committee that decided to pick that site, and what kind of finder's fee was associated with it, and what kind of tax abatements are associated with it. You might want to ask the same questions about this piece of property as well. Who decided to sell this piece of property? How was it chosen? Who was on that committee? Was anybody in the neighborhood on that committee? No. And is there going to be any tax abatements associated with it?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have answers to that question, Mr. Mayor? In concerns of like, who approves, or who had conversations with this piece of property? I'm just trying to be more educated.
So, as I said, there was an RFP that went out for the overarching project. Access over this acreage was part of that RFP. It's necessary to be able to develop the project, and it was built into that as part of the sales and purchase agreement. There is an easement for access that runs with the land. At some point, I believe, and I don't want to speak fully for Amazon, but in the conversations, that they wanted to make sure that with, nothing was built on that parcel that could in any way interfere with their easement. The easement wouldn't allow us to interfere with easement anyway, but in order to enforce the easement, if we had a different opinion, we could end up in a protracted lawsuit about whether or not that was possible. So, they said they were interested in buying. There was no committee that made a selection, it just happens to be the parcel that was there. It makes no sense, we've taken a look at it, I believe it would be very difficult to develop as a whole here. So, there's no selection committee. The conversations were just as part of this project moving along, and so, we said, okay, we'd be interested in selling it, we think it makes sense to get rid of it at this point, and let them be totally responsible for it, and that's why we're here. And you'll make the ultimate decision. You'll vote yes, you want to let them have it for this price, or no, you don't. But that's how this worked. It's just sort of an ancillary thing that happened to it. It could have all been put out as part of the first RFP, but at that time, I think the city had some sense, there was some sense that it might be worth holding on to, but as we looked at it more carefully, it just doesn't appear to make any sense to keep it.
Thank you for explaining all of that.
Aldman Alsoff.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The $325,000 question is, what are we going to do, and what plans do we have to do with that money?
So, that will come into the unallocated capital account like any other purchase that comes into the city, and will, you know, at some point, in order to allocate it, we would have to come back to you, whether it's that particular money or as part of a larger or different project. But, it would go into the unallocated capital account, and then ultimately, we would need to come back to this board to get permission.
So, essentially, right now, it's a surplus to the budget?
Well, it's not an op, it doesn't go to the operating.
And unallocated, it's money that hasn't been spent or identified to be spent.
Correct. Right, but it won't show up as a surplus in the operating budget because it's a capital expense. So, it'll go into the capital account, not into the...
So, we do have it in our capital projects if we needed it.
It would be available for capital projects going forward, correct?
Thank you.
Aldman Mosley.
Yeah, just for, thank you for recognition, Mr. President, just for clarification again. So, if we, if the body voted to not approve the purchase agreement, Amazon still maintains the easement over the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Sorry, I just wasn't done. I just want to say that I will be supporting this vote, but just so the public knows, like, we hear you, so keep giving feedback back to the mayor's office or the aldermen, and we'll work and try to figure out a way to get you through this period while we're building this. Thank you.
And we do hope to set something up shortly, you know, now that summer's over, people are back, with the Gil Martin Neighborhood Group to have a conversation about that with Amazon, so.
Further discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of approving the purchase and sale agreement when Amazon signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business item number two is approved. Unfinished item, business item number three, is the approval of proposed amendments to Section 37.071 and 37.073 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances relating to department heads and designated management employees, as submitted by Paul K. Pernuski Jr., Mayor of City of Waterbury. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item three.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving unfinished business item number three, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business item number three is approved. Unfinished business item number four has been withdrawn. Unfinished business item number five is the approval of the proposed amendments to Section 96.120-999 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances relating to fouling of public places by dogs, as submitted by Paul K. Pernuski Jr., Mayor of City of Waterbury. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Alderman Zimmerman.
Can someone explain the background on how this came toward us? I'm sure there's like a complaint or situation.
So, if you look at it, it does a couple of things. One is, it eliminates, so, let's back up a little bit. We have had a great deal of development going on in downtown, converting former offices into apartments. So, we're getting residents downtown. And what's happening is the residents all have pets, and there is currently an ordinance on the books that prohibits you from allowing your dog to deposit feces on public property. You can't do it at all. Well, it becomes illogical if you're going to have people living in residential housing who are going to have pets who need to walk them in the morning. We know that the dogs are going to go when they get outside, right? So, this changes that, to remove that prohibition so that we can continue to have people live downtown, and then it throws in and says, all right, but you have to make sure that you pick up after your dog, effectively. You have to have the means to do that, and if you don't do it, this will impose a fine on you for $50. So, it's not that we've had complaints, but we do know that there are more animals coming downtown. We're seeing that happen, and folks walking around downtown have noticed that not all of the dogs are being cleaned up after when they're on the street. So, it was to recognize the reality of pets downtown, but also the reality that we can't allow them to go and do their business without their owners being required to pick up after them.
Okay, and then who is going, what's our plan on policing it, or is it more complaint-based? How is, what's our plan?
You know, this is one of those things that becomes a little bit, if someone sees it, if an officer sees it, they'll write a citation, you'll get the fine. I think it's, at this point, it's $50 because $50 is the fault fine, but next year, when we do the budget, we can change that if we're interested. The same thing about the rooming houses. So, it'll be more of, you know, an eyes-on thing or a complaint thing that comes down. We do have lots of video all over the city these days, surveillance and the rest that's out there. So, I think if you see a continuing problem in a certain area, you'll be able to identify the person who's doing it and have a conversation with them. So, you know, this is one of those things that you would hope that somebody living downtown, this is their neighborhood, it's their front yard, would have some common sense and just not do it. But in the event, we know it's not going to happen, human nature being what it is, it would give us that chance to try to enforce it. So, but we're not going to have, you know, not like the parking guys, we're not going to have people just walking up and down the sidewalks all day. But if people do see it, if they report it, and we'll track down who's doing it, and then be able to deal with them.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Whoever thought we'd get to talk about dog poop at a meeting of the Board of Alder Men?
Aldman Mosley.
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President. I'm in full, in favor of this ordinance. I just would ask if the city would consider making sure that, especially in the downtown area, we have a lot of signage to remind people of this. I think it's good, I think obviously people should be responsible for their pets, but I also think it would be important for us to, you know, have some signage and include, you know, any penalties that may come from an infraction.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea, and we'll definitely make sure we do that. We want, what we really want, we don't want to have to enforce it, we want people to comply voluntarily, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of approving unfinished business item number five, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business item is approved. Unfinished business item number six, the approval of a proposed new ordinance concerning cigarette dealer licenses, as submitted by Paul K. Pernuski Jr., Mayor of City of Waterbury. Alderman Dorso.
Motion to approve item six.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you for recognizing, Mr. President. I don't have anything against the general provision or the addition. I just think the wording or verbatim, although I do recognize that this is simply copied from the state statute 12-287, is missing a lot of information that I believe is needed. For example, a cigarette dealer owner who files to renew his license has to send a notice. It doesn't specify where that individual is sending the notice to. It states that it has to go to the chief law enforcement official. Well, in Waterbury, we have a police chief, so we can put "police chief." It doesn't specify in which manner. Could it be an email? Is there a specific email that could be attached to this? Does it have to be a written mailed notice, which means that it would be postmarked, because it has to be submitted within 15 days? And then also, it allows the chief to answer or respond, but his respond is going to go to the Commissioner of Revenue Services. I believe the owner, the business owner, should also get the same response. If the chief determines that there's a need for responding to the renewal of the application, that same letter should be sent to the business owner as well. So, again, I'm not against the amendment. I understand that this is to align our policies with state policies, but I think at this point, we need a little more information to make sure that this is successful, especially when we're talking about business owners who are, you know, September 30th, the cigarette license expires. You sit at home, you log into your DAS account, you pay the $200, you're assuming that this is going to be taken care of, and then all of a sudden, you don't get your renewal approved, but you don't know why until it was denied. And then at that point, you have to file a claim to kind of figure out what happened. So, I think we need to add more detailed information to be sure that we get this done right. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think, you know, as far as the written notice goes, it can be, in this case, it's not required that it has to be mailed, it's not required that it has to be certified mailed, so, an email would work. I think the issue is if you start putting emails into the statute every time something changes there, you'd have to go back and change the statute. The state law doesn't provide for the comments going back, so this is modeled purely on the state law. We could ask for counsel at some point to look at whether you're able to expand what the chief can do if the granting law is more limited than that, but my, I don't know, I've never applied for these licenses, but I'm assuming at the end of the day, that the person who's put in the application is able to see the file and can see what all the comments are as well, so. But, it's possible to get, you know, if there's changes that can be made, I think those can be made, but at least for right now, this would give the chief the right to comment. The idea being that particularly with some of the tobacco places, what we find is that very often that they're selling marijuana or other things that are related to it, and this would be an opportunity for the chief to report that to the commissioner in making a decision on whether the license should be renewed, so.
Yeah, as I said, I'm not against it. I understand the need for this amendment, but I believe that we also have to be a little more concerned with communication back and forth, especially when you're paying a $200 fee for your renewal, and it's due every year. So, that's all. Yeah, so I'm fine with, as I said, this is great, but I'm fine with corporate council looking at this and adding, you know, additional information so that we get this done properly. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
One of my questions I think was just answered, but my, a question was, and I'm a little ignorant with the tobacco world, why is the police chief involved with cigarette stores opening?
So, they're licensed, but I think what we find is with smoke shops and with vape shops and the rest, that very often, in addition to selling legal products, they're selling things that are illegal that we wouldn't want children to have, often at strengths that are beyond what you would be able to sell in a legal marijuana facility, which are much more highly regulated. So, I think the concept here, and again, this is modeled simply after the state law, but the concept here is that the police chief would be aware of those things going on in his community, and if he knows that there's a license that's coming up, and the police have been there five times because they're selling marijuana, in effect, or some other illegal things, that he could report that to the commissioner, and they could use, take that information in when they're making a decision on whether or not to renew the license.
Okay, and then what is our current ordinance?
We don't have a current ordinance. There's that, this is, your license, this is a cigarette dealer by the state of Connecticut. We did just put a moratorium in on the vape shops and the smoke shops opening, so for new ones, I don't think, you know, right now, we're not doing any more of them, because we've got so many in the city right now.
And that was my question, when they apply to get this license in the very beginning, not to renew it, does that also go to the chief?
This is, the new applications don't go to the chief because there'd be no history for a new application, right?
Okay.
So, this is for a renewal, because by then, you have a track record. So, for a brand-new facility, although they're now, you can't open one here because we've got so many, we put a moratorium in, but this would only apply to somebody trying to renew their license, because then the chief could speak credibly about what the history has been over the term of the prior license.
Okay. So, based on your comment, Alderman Lopez, are you motioning to table it, or?
May I speak?
Oh, yes, Alderman Lopez.
No, no, I'm in favor of approving it tonight, and then also having, you know, discussions moving forward, you know, who do I, who do I contact, who do I email, who do I send a letter to? It's, you know, again, I know this is the same, this was copied and pasted from the state statute, so I understand, I get it, but you know, we do have a police chief, that could be stated here, this is Waterbury, so we have a police chief. There's also a possibility that the chief may designate someone. Is it a deputy? It's a, so, it could be listed here as well, but no, this is a good step, and as the mayor has alluded to, a, this is only for a renewal. The new application, your first-time application, is really extensive. You know, then every September 30th, you just simply log in onto your account online, and you renew your application. In this case, this allows the chief to kind of have a say, right? So, hey, this is, wait a minute, this is that entity in that location that we've known that causes trouble, and he, he may, it just simply says he may respond. He may respond to the commissioner and say, yeah, listen, consider, you know, we've had five different situations, this may not be, you know, needed for approval of the renewal, and then they go forward. But I just, yeah, I agree with the premise, the context, I just think we need to add a little more detail to the policy, especially because we just added a new chapter. We added a complete new chapter, 123.01, to our policy, so we can definitely make it a little stronger, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you.
So, you know, Alderman Zimmerman, too, I would say it's the same kind of scenario as with the liquor control, with the permits on the bars, cafes, and restaurants. As those violations come in, the police department, police chief, whoever records, automatically sends up that violation to the liquor control to start building a case against that business. So, when it does actually do, does reapply, those can, records are, that's, those incidents are all on record, and also, the state, it may notify the state where they come down and pay that business a visit also. So, it's more of a way for, not so much police action, but more contact with the state so the state can come down and do their business with that owner also, so.
Thank you for the information, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving unfinished business item number six, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business six is approved. Unfinished business item number seven is the approval of a proposed new ordinance concerning hotels and lodging houses, as submitted by Paul K. Junior, Paul K. Pernuski Jr., excuse me, Mayor, Mayor of City of Waterbury. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Alderman Rodriguez?
Hello. I just have one question about it. I hear from some, from one of the people here talking before us about if it's breaking any laws in the way of First Amendment, and my second question would be, is, have this been done in other towns or states? Do we have any record on that?
Yeah, it's not violating any constitutional rights that are there. We have the right to regulate rooming houses and hotels, and this is just one more step in that. I do believe it's been done in other municipalities. Do you have a list of where they've been done? Okay. They have been done in other places.
That's fine.
For the same reasons. And the only thing I would note is that there is one change to what you originally received, where it was going to be in Chapter 123 under hotels and lodging houses, and it's instead been changed. Substantively, it hasn't changed, but it's going to land in the Housing Code, Housing Code, Chapter 154, because it gives more effective enforcement powers if you put it as part of the housing code rather than in the other chapter. So, that's not a substantive change, it's just which chapter of the ordinances it's going to be located in.
And then, another thing that I saw there, the 12 hours.
Right.
If it's, can we change that to a whole day, or it's better off to keep it at 12 hours?
I mean, you probably could put it in for 24 hours, you know, most hotel rooms, actually, if you take it for one day, are not quite 24 hours, because your check-in is typically 5:00 at night, you have to be out by 10:00 the next morning, so I think just the idea was that 12 hours was a good block. If problems continue to ensue as a result of the 12 hours, we can take a look at saying it's got to be, you know, for a day, but 12 hours is a, you know, six, would be 6:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, it's a logical sleeping time, 1 hour, 3 hours, 4 hours. In a city like Waterbury, I know, you know, there may be times you look at it, but we don't have a long haul truck depot in Waterbury, the truck drivers are coming here as a terminus, and even then, they would need more than 1 hour or 4 hours, because there's a, once they've been on the road a certain time, they got hit 8 hours. Same thing with airline crews, this is not a convenient stop for airlines coming anywhere because of where we're located, there's no international airport or commercial airport nearby, but also, their rest periods are longer than 1 hour, 2 hour, 4 hours.
Truck drivers, it's 6 hours, so.
6 hours, so, you know, the same thing here, so. And there are places where trucks tend to come, you know, you go to Southington, they may have a different set of rules, because they have a different set of circumstances, but we know what's happening here in the 1, 2, 3-hour rentals, and there's nothing good happening in that timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President. I just want to say, I'm fully in support of this, I think we've heard from a number of community members, residents, business owners, nonprofit leaders, about the concerns in our community. Not only, we've not only heard from them here in this chamber, but to the gentleman's point who spoke earlier from Waterbury Times, we've seen on social media over the years, we've talked to community members, and I think that this will help our city move forward, so I'm fully in favor of it, and I will be voting in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Alderman Zimmerman?
I'm also fully in support of it, but I have a few questions. Is the business owner here in this room?
Which business owner?
Of this hotel, of, say, let's go for the Apple Hotel.
We don't have any hotel managers in the room that I'm aware of.
What are the conversations from them? What have they said when, I mean, obviously, they know that we're going to pass this, right?
Well, I'm assuming they know, I don't know, we haven't reached out to them individually. You know, the issue doesn't arise at the Marriott, the issue doesn't arise at the Hampton Inn, they're not renting rooms that way. The manager of the Big Apple Motel, and let's be honest, right, DM said it, and it's true, right? That's, we know a lot of crime occurs in the Big Apple Motel, but they've said that they're not renting by the hour anymore. Earlier this week, or the end of last week, I was interviewed by a news reporter who told me, and I think it was part of a story that evening, that at 11:00 that morning, they called the Big Apple Motel, and they said, if we want to rent this for an hour or a couple of hours, what would it cost? And they quoted them a 4-hour rental and a 24-hour rental. And when the news reporter called the owner of the hotel, he said, we don't rent by anything less than a day, and he said, well, we just called and we're able to get a timeframe, or a schedule of cost for that, and he says, well, that's a mistake, we don't do that anymore. So their position is they're not doing it, but we know that it's happened historically, it may happen again, I believe it does happen now, and this is just one more way to enforce it, so. Yeah, so I don't think that, they're not here objecting to it, no one is saying they shouldn't be able to open for an hour, what they're saying is they don't do it, and I think we know that they do.
Do we know if all of the hotels and motels in the city are up to date on their taxes, on paying their property taxes? Are we in a situation where we have some troubled buildings that are severely delinquent?
I'd have to go back and check, I didn't check the taxes that come here tonight, I'm not aware of any of them that are severely delinquent, I know, you know, again, talking about some of the more troubled ones, we've looked at what's there, and we would take whatever steps we could to try to, you know, enforce that, you know, make sure that we're not having those problems, so if they were delinquent in their taxes, we would take a look at that. But I'm not, I'm not aware, as I stand here, of any that are, but we'll take a look at it. Do you have any reason to believe that any of them are?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any reason to believe that any of them are?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, is your question based on the fact that you know?
No, I'm just wondering, like, you know, if you own this hotel, like, what is the purpose, what is your mindset where you're renting rooms out for an hour or two, and fully well aware and seeing what's happening in your hotel? And then, like, are you a stand-up person? Like, so part of your stand-up citizen in our city is, are you paying your taxes? Are you having crime at your place, and you're just completely avoiding it? And questions like that, so that's where it was coming from.
As you know, the Big Apple Motel was shut down at some point.
Yes.
About 2 years ago for violations, and as you also, as I alluded to earlier tonight, up on Willow Street, you know, we had 2 large buildings, 140, 174, which have both been closed because of code violations and the rest, and I think it was 140, in which when they, the police arrested 12 people, a lot of 16 people living there, there was no power, the photos you see are just horrific of what that looked like, and the owner was raking in about $4,000 a month from people who were paying to go there. There was powder all over the floor, and just anecdotally, I will tell you, the police told me that when they went in there with their flashlights, there were rodents everywhere, and when they shined the lights at the rodents, they didn't even run away, they just looked at them with this glazed look, and their belief is that the rodents were actually stoned, because they were picking up all the drugs that were on the ground. So I can't tell you why people do that, but I can tell you that there are people who will run businesses that take advantage of their fellow human beings, and it's not, it's not limited, and there are people who do that. So I don't know why, but our job is not to really necessarily know why it's.
Oh, you know, I understand that. Yep, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving unfinished business item number 7, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business item number 7 is approved. With that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to return to regular order of business? So moved. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, there we are, return to our regular order of business. We will recess into committees, and we will start with finance. Alderman Salvio.
I call the finance committee to order item number 7. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds for the following canceled electrical permits, as submitted by Frank Baker, building official, John Lantieri, electrical permit, $787.50, IA home improvement, electrical for $337.50. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 8. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following water and sewer refund. Monroe Augustine, overpayment, $1,500, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 9. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a Connecticut Department of Health FY 2026 per capita funding application, as submitted by Aisling McGuckin, RN, MSN, MPH, Director of Health. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract with Vincente Consulting Group to conduct an evaluation of the prevention in Connecticut Communities Initiative at WHD, as submitted by Aisling McGuckin, RN, MSN, MPH, Director of Public Health. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve authorization to amend and extend the city's electrical power supply contract with Direct Energy, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Alderman Nelson?
Can you explain a little bit about this to us, what the contract, what the amendment is?
Yes, good evening, I'm Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. What this is in relation to is, we currently have an electricity supply contract with Direct Energy, and that term is ending in the middle of November, so in anticipation of that contract expiring, we issued a request for proposals to gain respondents from the other electricity suppliers in the marketplace, in order to then pre-qualify them via a contract that would be brought before this board, where we would have multiple suppliers with approved contracts in place, so that when we went in, performed a reverse auction, these are the procedural steps to get to a reverse auction. And I guess a little for the background, electricity is, like oil and natural gas, is traded on the commodities market, the rates, if you will, adjust every day, and on the morning of that we would be performing a reverse auction, we would have to make a decision that day as far as who we would select and lock in the rate, and well as the term, which could be a one-year or a multiple-year term via the reverse auction. We only received 2 respondents to the request for proposals, we were disappointed in that, and in further discussions with our energy consultant, we felt that the best move at this point would be to go through a process again to request proposals to qualify additional companies, to have dialogue with those companies, to find out why it was that they didn't respond to the RFP that went out earlier this summer. For that process to unfold, we're going to run up on the expiration of the current contract with Direct Energy. I will tell you by way of background, Direct Energy has been the city's supplier of electricity for the better part of the last decade. They have consistently been the most aggressive in their pricing, and if you approve these authorizations, what it will allow us to do is to approach Direct Energy on one or multiple days to find an opportunity to lock in a good rate for the 12-month period that would begin in the middle of November. We do have a little bit of leverage in that, if we're unable to get Direct Energy to give us the desired rate, our fallback option is to revert back to standard service with Eversource. The only issue there is Eversource resets their rates every 6 months, and there'll be a reset on January 1st, so. I do believe Direct Energy would be very interested in trying to secure our accounts for another year, and, you know, it is subject to the market conditions, but right now, the market conditions are pricing right around the rate that we're currently paying under the contract that we have with Direct Energy.
Surplus solar energy from our generating systems, who pays us for that? Does it, is it Eversource buys that from us, or does Direct Energy give us credit for any surpluses?
It would be, so you may be referring to the 5 solar projects that have been approved, and we've also secured grants through the state of Connecticut, through the Department of Administrative Services for the construction of 5 solar arrays. That will come, we will receive revenue in the form of renewable energy credit that Eversource would pay for, so the power that's generated from those systems would result in a revenue payment to the city as opposed to a credit against the utility consumption.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, since you're there, do we, usually, the RFP, when it goes out, is it a 12-month period that we're requesting for, or?
No, so the RFP was just to garner responses that would allow us to go through a pre-qualification process with the electric suppliers. The term would be established, and there would be multiple term options, but that would come about through the reverse auction.
And what are those terms? Is that, is that once we hope that by, that happens by November?
No, it would overlap November, and that's why we're seeking authorization from you to allow us to essentially extend the contract with Direct Energy for an additional 12 months, and in that window, which would be really between now and the end of the calendar year, we would look to reissue the RFP to pre-qualify companies, and with the expectation that we get to the point where we can do a reverse auction before the end of the calendar year.
Got it, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Your standing committee. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills, in the amount of $17,594.92, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Junior, CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the refunds.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm supposed to go that way.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, a call to order the Intergovernmental Committee, starting with item number 2. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following new job specifications, as submitted by Tara L. Shaw, Director of Human Resources. Those job specifications are Town Clerk Administrative Specialist 2, Seasonal Snowplow Operator, and Deputy Building Official. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Good evening, for the record, Tara Shaw, Director of Human Resources.
How you doing? Thank you for coming. My question to you is, these 3 new positions we're putting into the agenda this year?
Oh, yeah. So these 3 positions would replace existing positions that are in the budget?
So they're going to be at the same rate that we had?
So that is yet to be seen, it would have to be negotiated, but the proposal from the city, at least with respect to the part-time snowplow operator, and the Town Clerk Administrative Specialist 2, that would replace the Administrative Associate 3, currently budgeted but vacant in that office, and so those would be at the same rate. The Deputy Building Inspector is a new position that would replace an Assistant Building Inspector position. The Department of Inspections is one of our only departments that doesn't really have a second in command, so there's really no succession plan, so the organizational change here would be to develop a position set forth in the job specification that would serve as the second in command in the Department of Inspections.
And now for the seasonal snowplow, would they be going to the union, or how are we going to work that out?
So typically with our part-time positions, they're not union-eligible, this really would be a position that we'd be recruiting per DM snowwork. We tend to not have enough people to plow when the storms come, there's currently 5 vacancies in the heavy equipment operator position citywide, and it's also very taxing on our staff when you have a big storm and there's a lot of cleanup, we're asking people to do a lot over an extended period of time sometimes.
Been there, done that. Tara, so, been there, done that. Well, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on item number two? Alderman Zimmerman.
So, the snowplow operator is going to replace or balance out our heavy equipment operator? Like, how does that work? So, if we have four vacancies, we're going to use that funding right now for this, what else happens in the heavy operator position? It's just not snowplowing, right?
It's not just snowplowing, it's our streets department and all individuals who use all of the heavy equipment to plow, excuse me, to pave and to do things of that nature. You have to have a CDL license, you're operating the big trucks. Some of them, I think, require also additional certifications on your license.
What do we do right now for snowplowing?
In terms of operations?
People, like, do we have contractors that come in, or do we use just our Public Works? What do we?
I would defer to Mr. Simpson if he wants to answer that. I know we certainly use our employees, we ask them to do a lot over lengthy periods of time, sometimes 18 to 24 hours.
And how many positions is this seasonal operator? Is it one? Just while I have you, because I don't know.
So, we're really not sure at this point, since there's five vacancies, and I think it really depends on the storm. I think maybe the idea is to have a list of people that you can call in if it's a big storm, if we have people who are away on vacation or ill, to see what our staffing looks like and what the weather looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Alderman, David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Was your first question, would they be replacing heavy equipment operators?
I guess my question, yes.
So, the intent of this is, we have never done this before. Right now, we have five vacancies for heavy equipment operators, which are full-time positions, not just snowplow operators. They may need to do pavement work, masonry work, curb. This would be specifically for a part-time employee, not to work exceeding 32 hours a week on call. On call means, it's going to snow tonight, would you want to work? Not put them on for a week, we're going to call you and see if you want to work this snowstorm. That's the limit, and they would only work the snowstorm.
So, I would think we would keep these heavy operator positions, because I'm sure you need them since we have them, right? And then this would be an additional contracting, kind of on-call type of thing? Like, how, I don't understand how you can operate when, I mean, you have these positions for a reason, right? Or have we found a way to kind of work around it and not use the vacancies, or?
And that's exactly the point. And it's not the way to work around it. Yes, we have, and, you know, when we plow snow, we use a number of different attributes, whether it's HEOs, refuse trucks. Operators will plow, our private contractors, which are a whole different scenario. We have five vacancies, so we would never go over budget on the number of positions that we have available. But right now, we have five vacancies, and the last list that was presented to us had four people, and one showed up for the interview.
Okay, and this is obviously your request, right, to?
This is my, yeah, this was my request to consider it. Dan Barry has done it, two years successfully, two years, nobody was interested. So, I don't know, right now, I can't tell you what it's going to turn out, but it's something else that we can at least look at and advertise.
Okay.
Looking for maybe a retiree, or someone who worked some construction during the summer and is looking for winter work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on item number two? Alderman Rodriguez.
Question, so will be a part-time or per DM? So, the position will be a part-time job or a per DM job?
I would call it a temporary, so if you call it per DM.
Yeah, it would be per DM.
Per DM?
Yes.
Because they will be on-call, so only for that moment, and that's it? Got it. And I have one question for the Deputy Building Official. Probably Mr. Frank will answer better this question. What will be the duties of this building official to help?
So, essentially, most of our deputies have the same duties as the department heads, the assistant directors or deputies across city departments. So, it would be the same type of work, and it would assist in the, on the management side and running the Department of Inspections.
And do we have already people wanting to do this position or qualified to this, to the position?
We believe we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number two? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number three, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman authorize the mayor to execute the commitment to fund a state of Connecticut Department of Transportation Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant in the amount of $3,100,000 for the purpose of executing a streetscape improvement project at North Main Street from West Main Street to Phoenix Ave, along the South Main Street from Scoville Street to Grand Street, as submitted by James Nardozzi, Executive Director, Waterbury Development Corporation. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the acceptance of the $3 million.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hi, Mr. Nardozzi, how are you?
Good evening, good evening. James Nardozzi, Executive Director, Waterbury Development Corporation.
Thank you for going after this grant, we appreciate it. I just, I need a reminder, what is the city's commitment now that we have this grant to do this project?
Zero, we just have to accept the 3.1 million.
All right, perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number three? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following. Number one, master municipal agreement for rights-of-way projects between the city of Waterbury and the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Number two, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the above-referenced MMA-ROW on behalf of the city of Waterbury, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, Department of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
I just have a quick question as to, I guess this is like expiring, right? So, we're trying to renew it, is this the same type of process and contract that we had done in the past?
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer, yes, this is exactly the same process we went before. Expire is every 10 years, this is renewable.
Okay, and it has worked well? There's no revisions or any lessons learned that we need to be aware of?
No, this is incredibly beneficial for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number four? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number five, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract for one-exchange heat pump replacement between the city of Waterbury and Serraco Mechanical Services, Inc. in the amount of $1,794,500. Under this agreement, Serraco Mechanical will replace approximately 84 heat pumps in the one-exchange building, as submitted by David Simpson, Deputy, David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
David Simpson, Director of Public Works.
My question to it is, is this money already in the bond that we did? This is coming out of the bond that we already approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, they took this in consideration when they inspected the building of changing all these 84 pumps? Or this is something that it was, they just find out right now?
No, no, we have known that both the heating and the air conditioning in the building was going to need to be upgraded, particularly considering the fact we will be having incoming tenants, and it's going to be swing space for a number of city departments with the Chase Building renovation.
Okay. This question is probably not going to concern you in this part of it. I got a question, do we have already an M.I.'s way of knowing how much we already have spent in this project in the one exchange?
So, I don't have it with me right now, but yes, we can compile that for you and get it back to you.
Yeah, I would like to have that to see how much we have spent so far in this project of one exchange.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number five? Alderman Zimmerman.
I think I just have a comment, since now it's under one owner, I would love to see it go on Zillow and just sell it. I would love to just sell this property, but that's just my comment, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number five? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call vote?
Yeah, we do, okay. Alderman Hunter. Ald, excuse me, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Talladine.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Nay.
Got five yes, one no.
The motion passes, thank you. Item number six, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a request for formal acceptance of roadway and infrastructure improvements associated with completion of a paper street, subject to submission of a one-year maintenance bond. James Christian Mason Ave., Waterbury, as submitted by Robert Nierney, City Planner, Department of Planning. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm glad both of the parties are happy and have come to an agreement. I just have a question as far as, we've had a lot of groundwater issues and movement happening, so what do we do from a city perspective when we are working with these two parties? Just to, what have we evaluated? Like, if this gentleman starts building structures on this property, have we looked at, are there repercussions? Are there things that need to be put into place to have that happen, et cetera?
Bob Nierney, City Planner. That's something that we, each lot will be required to come in for zoning permit and a building permit, and at that time, we would require that erosion controls and also riprap entrance pad be put down to try to minimize siltation and water from being tracked off-site. The other thing to recognize too is that the roadway is in and the catch basin system is in, so anything coming out onto the street will be caught in the catch basin and then brought to a settling pond that was developed as part of the project.
Okay, and is the, is the owner aware of that? Of, I guess, the steps that need to happen in order to develop on it, so it's not a surprise, or is that kind of his responsibility to research?
Yes, as noted earlier by their counsel, it was mentioned that this is a project that's been going on for almost 25 years, and sometimes acrimonious at times between the parties, but he's well aware of the construction process and certainly having built the road and now realizing that he has to secure permits, or whoever buys the properties, maybe a builder or homeowner, that they're obligated to, you know, get all the necessary approvals to complete the project. And hopefully, as homes have developed, the lawns, the yards will be stabilized, and that also will help slow down any acceleration of runoff.
And what is your opinion of this project? Are you in, have you, are you confident that this is a good thing?
I think overall, it's turned out very well. Mr. Christian did run into some underground ledge that he wasn't expecting, which added perhaps more time and cost to the project, but it's actually a very attractive subdivision. Again, this had actually gone to litigation, civil litigation between Mr. Christian and his neighbor. That seems to have been worked out, and hopefully, you know, the road can be fully accepted, and, you know, no doubt, new residents will, will be buying these properties.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nierney, appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number six? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a construction contract for Manmouth Avenue Storm Drainage Improvements between the city of Waterbury and Colona Masonry Concrete and Asphalt Paving, LLC, in the amount of $138,564, as submitted by Thomas R. Crowe, PE Civil Engineer II, Department of Engineering. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a construction contract for Medway Road Storm Drainage Improvements between the city of Waterbury and Gerber Construction, Inc. in the amount of $89,515.43, as submitted by Thomas F. Crowe, PE Civil Engineer II, Department of Engineering. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, with that, the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving place on file. Items number two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 are on consent to approve. Items 14, 15, and 16 are receiving place on file. Unfinished business items number two, three are on consent to approve. Item, unfinished business item number four is withdrawn. Unfinished business items number five, six, and seven are on consent to approve. Alderman Dorso is there, motion, respect the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, the consent calendar is read.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Zimmerman.
I'd like to remove number five from the consent calendar.
Alderman Dorso, the motion now is to approve the consent calendar as read minus a new business item number five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the consent calendar as read minus a new business item number five. Sixty-five, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved with respect to item number five. The chair would recognize Alderman Talladine, the chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number five, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract for one-exchange heat pump replacement between the city of Waterbury and Serraco Mechanical Services, Inc. in the amount of $1,794,500. Under this agreement, Serraco Mechanical will replace approximately 84 heat pumps in the one-exchange building, as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. Is there discussion? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote.
Alderman Else. Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Nay.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Talladine.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman D.G. Ovencarlo?
Yes.
Eleven yes, three no.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. With respect to the standing committee, the Chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $17,594.92, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I apologize. Hold on, I did miss the, who approved it? Who was the first and second? Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving standing committee, the refunds, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the refunds are approved. With that, that is our business for the evening. I will start off by wishing all of you good luck tomorrow night. Wish you the best, all of you. And with that, Alderman Alsuff?
Thank you. My annual closer, my regular closing. Mr. Condas brought it up, the tax-exempt properties. We still haven't heard anything about us going after the money that's truly owed to the City of Waterbury and the taxpayers at this point. It's very clear that we're just ignoring this and letting it sit there, and that's not responsible. And I, again, request that all actions be started to recover the money that we should be getting and continue to collect. Second item I have is progress on the Sacred Heart sale of the buildings that were supposed to be sold. And also, question that came to my mind is, I remember in the past, there was quite a controversy about cell phone towers being put into the Sacred Heart steeple. I believe it's a steeple or tower. And I know it went into a whole bunch of different problems for the archdiocese as far as where the money was going and what was happening. But I'm wondering if those cell phone towers are still there? And who's collecting the money if they are? And how much is it? Because it's not likely that they just were taken out. They may have been because of the trouble with the archdiocese, but I believe that if they're still there, and we've all overlooked it, including myself, to this point, we better get on the ball, because at least something could be being paid there, if that's the case. So, I'm asking that some investigation into that goes on, and some answers come back to us. And again, please, please expedite getting that white elephant off our back before it crumbles down and we have to sell used bricks. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do believe the cell phone tower was, there was an incident where some fraudulent stuff went on, where I believe it was cashed out, money was taken. I could be wrong, I don't want to comment too much, but I believe that is the problem with the cell phone towers. It was pretty much, the money was absorbed by one individual that took it, basically, you know, and locked it, locked in a deal. So, further discussion, for the good of the order. Alderman Rodriguez?
I just heard that we collected $5 million from Watertown, Water. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct. On August fifteenth, Watertown dropped off a check for $5 million that's been applied to the water and sewer accounts.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I will add to that, congratulations to every member on this board that was there at the time when it was asked whether a deal should be made, or we should take them to court, and this board said, let's take them to court. So, congratulations to all of us, by the way, that made that tough decision. Alderman Zimmerman?
I guess on that question, I guess I have a question on the $5 million. What, do we have a plan or a bucket that that's going in to save that funding for the water company or infrastructure? Or it hasn't been determined yet?
It hasn't been determined yet. You know, currently, it's been applied against the receivable, and, you know, depending on what comes of the resolution of the rest of the debt, there'll then be a determination made as far as how we would want to recommend applying those funds as a carve-out, potentially, you know, towards the capital funds for the water and on the sewer side as well.
And then what does the rest of the payments look like? Is there a schedule or anything? Because I'm, I'm just not aware.
Well, the overall debt is, is in the neighborhood of $34, $35 million. And as has been reported in the papers, and a lot of this is out there publicly, I believe Watertown has scheduled a referendum for requesting approval for them to be able to go out to bond the obligation that's owed to the City of Waterbury. And if that referendum passes, then they would subsequently either issue a bond anticipation note or a full bond, and the expectation is they would then make payments of Waterbury.
Thank you. I just, too, have two additional community comments, if that's all right. The Puerto Rican Day Festival and Parade was this weekend, it was a great event, it was nice to see everyone, everyone's float and things like that. It was pretty neat. I'm just glad that our city continues with culture. It's a great thing to see. The second thing is Martin Luther King Park. We've been approving a lot of money for them, and there is going to be some sort of information that comes out of an opening that's going to happen. Right now, it's scheduled for Saturday, September twentieth, and I know all of our calendars are booking up, so I just want to throw that date out there. I know the Letterman's Club is very involved, and they're looking for community partners to make sure that everyone's involved. So, you can reach out to me or your fellow Aldermen, and we can try to all work together to coordinate a great opening for quite the investment that we've made and we're excited about. So, thanks.
And I do want to say one thing. I think that's, the referendum's the sixteenth in Watertown, and also, congratulations, so far, there is one more little hurdle out there, so I don't want to congratulate just too quick, congratulate us too quick. But anybody else, for the good of the order. Seeing none, Alderman Dorso. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
We are adjourned.